This meeting of the Richlands Town Council will now come to order. Would everyone please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight, for the members of the council, those present in council chambers, the staff, the manager, and those who cannot be with us. We thank you for their thoughts and their wishes for a good meeting. We pray for your blessings on all of us individually and collectively. We thank you for this beautiful day. Fall is here. It's a change of seasons, always a change of times. We appreciate all that you do for us, all the blessings in our lives individually and collectively that come our way because of your grace. We thank you for your forgiveness of us and for your direction in showing us the path to always do the right thing and as best we can to follow in your footsteps. Tonight, we're missing someone very special, Mr. Bob Altizer, who is the senior partner of our town attorney, the law firm. We pray for his soul, his guidance, his direction from heaven, and we pray for his family, his friends, the members of his firm who are here but missing him too. We thank you, Bob, in heaven, for your service in this community, this town, the fact that you are a Richlands native. You grew up here. We know your family. We pray for them and your children. Let us have a moment of silence in memory and in honor of Bob Altizer. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. When I read Bob's obituary in the paper, I knew he was a tech fan, and it didn't hold it against him, Bob, but I didn't realize how involved he was in the education of students in so many ways. It's quite a testament to the person he was, and these legacies live after us. What we do is the pattern for those who follow us, and we hope that we can follow in the footsteps of good examples on this earth. Thank you. Mike, we think of you and your members. Thank you. Counsel, we have before us an agenda with additions and deletions to be added as recommended by the council. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor Curry, I have two, please.
Yes, Laura.
The first really doesn't matter where it's added, but there's a refund issue regarding of a meter, demand meter. The second is we've got Teen Venture with us tonight, and if we could let them be first on the agenda, and that way we can get, let the kids do their presentation. They don't have to sit through all of them.
Okay. Would you suggest putting that after Roman numeral four or after Roman numeral five?
Either. I would be fine with either.
Can we go with after Roman numeral five? We'll take care of the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
So we'll make that Roman numeral five A and it's Teen Venture. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. All right. And what was the second one, Laura?
The next one was a refund issue regarding a previously removed demand meter.
Okay. Maybe we should put that under Agenda Items. Let's see here. How about right after N, Roman numeral eight, LMNO? Would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's called refund item. All right.
Mayor, if it's okay, I have one to add right after that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
It's Dialogue and Design Contract Agreement.
So that'd be P.
Yes.
What's it called, sir?
It's a Dialogue and Design Contract Agreement.
Dialogue and Design? Contract Agreement? Okay, thank you, John. Any other changes?
Agenda Item at the very top, A, we need to have the first reading for its ordinance, O 2022-0901 and O 2022-0902. That's essentially the map that goes along with the ordinance for the B3 zone.
Okay, let me see, because I sought some assistance on that. So this one right here that does not have a number on it needs to have zero ordinance 2022, right?
Correct.
Dash 0902?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, if you'll pencil that in on this ordinance that does not have an ordinance number, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, are there any other additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay. Before we take a vote on that, we have scheduled public comments. We have Michael Sizemore. And unscheduled public comments, we have two people who've signed up, and they are Joella Farmer. If you'll put Joella under Roman numeral seven. Joella Farmer. And also Morgan Earp has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who did not know to sign up who would like to speak before this council? Is there anyone present who did not know to sign up who would like to speak before this council? If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you. All right. So are there any further changes to the agenda? There being no changes, I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff makes the motion to accept the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick makes the second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask a roll call. Vote, Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We have before us a consent agenda, Roman numeral five. It includes authorization to pay the bills, the minutes of the joint public hearing of August 9th, and the town council meeting of August 9th, the town council workshop of August 23rd, and the town council workshop of August 25th, the continued workshop of August 29th, and the budget amendment. Is there any question about that, or is there a motion to accept this consent agenda as presented?
I actually have two questions about the check register. The first one is to Blue Ridge Power. We see them quite often every time we have them here. Are we paying a fee for that?
That's probably a question Alice could answer, but I believe that's part of our fee that we pay for our membership dues.
Okay. And the next one is to Thompson and Litten.
What is the number, Laura?
The number for that one is 12545.
Are you just asking what it is?
Yeah. To my understanding, we were not going to get any more bills from them.
It's another project. We did a, we got a grant for a sanitary sewer evaluation survey, I believe, SSES, and that's part of that. We're hopefully wrapping that up. We've done the cameras and the smoke testing that was brought up last month, so that's part of, you had to kind of go through and see where our problem areas are, if it's what I'm thinking it is, but that's the only invoice I know that we've got from them in the last month.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about the consent agenda?
What's the budget amendment? That's, that's for the EMS vehicle. We moved the money from the fire department to the EMS.
We got them stapled this time, so I had to go through and find out how to do this, but I got it. They're right here.
Okay.
I do have a quick question about that, too.
Yes.
In the budget amendment, it says the purpose of the amendment is to transfer the funds to rescue from fire in the amount of 50,000, but then at the bottom, it says it's going from fire to finance for 51,000, which is...
It's a typo. The money should have gone from fire to rescue, and it should have been the... Let me find my copy. It wasn't the 50,000, it was the...
51,582.
Yeah, the not rounded number.
Will you guys fix that?
Yeah, we can. Before the mayor signs, it won't change those. But it was the 51,582. It's the number red and the black. That's the correct ones.
Okay. And it's going from fire to rescue?
Rescue. And that vehicle should be ready in the next month, we believe. There's a few last minute things that are happening, the things that, you know, attachments have to go on that, but it's almost ready to be used.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Laura. So to be clear on that, the sentence that says the purpose of this amendment is to transfer funds to the fire department from the, I'm sorry. I apologize to the council. Let's just do this. My apologies. So it will read this money's going from fire to rescue for the amount of 51,582, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Making sure we get that. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions about the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second, and any further questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I think we have the motion that we...
That was for approval of the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jeff. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
And Seth makes the second. Any further discussion? Okay. There being no discussion, I will ask a roll call. Vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. It's unanimous. The consent agenda passes. Okay, we added Roman numeral five A for Teen Venture. Who's here who would like to speak on behalf of Teen Venture? Please come up, and you can use the podium if you'd like.
I have...
Handouts?
Our budget.
Oh, yes. Feel free to distribute these. And do you have a copy for the manager and the clerk, too? That would be great. Right here at the blue shirt. Thank you.
I only have six copies.
You can share them. Y'all share them. I'm done.
And John, can you and Becca share? How about, Becca, you need this for the record. Pass this to John. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. She'll state your name for the benefit of the clerk, and if you don't mind your address and what you do.
Okay. I'm Carol Anne Lawrence. I'm the executive director of Teen Venture Center. I've brought the students with me today who were present. Our address is 217 Railroad Avenue in Richlands, so we're just right down in the hill here.
I'm Jimmy Toward. I'm a board member.
And I've given you a copy of our budget for the year, as well as the last seven months for '22, the year of '22, for our utilities. We've come before you today to ask if the Town of Richlands would be able to pay Teen Venture's utility bills. When Teen Venture started, the Town of Richlands gave them a stipend every year to help with operating expenses. Over the years, that was reduced from $20,000 to $5,000, and now we don't receive anything from the Town of Richlands, so we would please ask for your generosity to help us with our utility bills so that we can continue operating. I would also like to ask the roof of the building. Well, the building is still owned by the Town of Richlands, and the roof is leaking and causing damage to some of the interior, and we would like to request assistance replacing the roof on the older part of the building. If that's something that you guys would consider, we would be greatly appreciative of your generosity.
Any help you can give us would be appreciated. COVID made it difficult for us to operate, keep the doors open. A lot of the grants were based on the idea that we would do certain things, we would have kids, people to do them with, and so there was some money that was returned. We appreciate the fact that the town does help us in any way they can, and very much with any consideration you can give us. We could bring a good number of young people who've come to the Teen Center, skate, participate in other programs, if you'd like to talk with some of them, or if any of them would like to say anything.
Jim, I would suggest, when I saw the students coming in, I asked Christian Bond, and he had to leave because he had important things to do. And I hope people tell him that Mr. Curry said this, okay? Here you are asking for help. That being said, with all due respect to the kids, I think it's important that we meet them, so would you please have them come up and just introduce themselves to us personally? Come on up. Gentlemen, ladies, come on up. Just start over here on the left and work your way through and tell us who you are. Tell each member of council.
Kristen Witt.
Nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you, Savannah.
I'm Kristen Witt. Thank you all for coming.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Kristen Witt. It's nice to meet you all.
Savannah.
Brock.
Nice to meet you, buddy.
Nice to meet you, too.
Nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you. Thank you all for coming.
Nice to meet you.
What's your name?
Alex. It's nice to meet you, too. Thank you for coming.
Nice to meet you. How are you doing?
Thank you for coming.
Very good. What's your name?
Thank you for coming.
Alyssa White. Nice to meet you. In your name, please. Nice to meet you guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, before you go, you can have a seat. And nobody's fortunate here, and I like Christian. I wouldn't talk about him publicly. First off, I saw some of you coming here skating. Is anybody, do you have your skates on right now, ladies and gentlemen? You have skates with them, seriously? I'm here to put you down here. Put your skates on. Skate if you're a young man. Are you afraid of falling? Oh, come on up. You won't. Just look out for the wire. Show us what you can do. You don't walk, skate. Oh, is that skating? Do you have a key and a lock for your skates?
I do not.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't guess.
Members of council, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yep. It's an old people joke. I'm with you. I know what you're talking about.
I resemble that remark. What a pleasure to have you. Thank you. Anytime kids are here, it always behooves us to take good care of them and do the best we can. I wish I could skate, and no need to explain the skate key thing. I'm sure your elders will explain that to you afterwards in a little history class on the advancement of technology. Thank you, ma'am. What?
I told them to Google it.
Oh, good. That's our best friend. Back to the serious business. Kids, I have two questions to you. What is your, young man, is Bevins, Mr. Bevins? I know your family. Who, what is your favorite thing to do at Teen Venture? What is it?
Pottery.
Pottery. How cool is that? So it's not all just skating. How interesting. I can't remember all the names. I'm looking at this lady right back here. She knows with the long blonde hair. You've got your part just to the left of center, to the right of center. What is your, yes, ma'am. What is your favorite thing to do? Pottery. Who teaches you pottery there? Oh, okay, cool. Anybody else? Who are the skaters in this crowd? Hold your hands up, please. Okay. Last question, because we don't have a lot of time, but there's always time for you, always. Are you better than Christian Bond?
I wish I was.
Oh. Okay. I'm creating a little sense of rivalry here, okay? Not Mr. Curry. No, 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 no. What? Please do. Thank you. So your leaders, your adult leaders are here to seek help, and they're asking for a roof on the old part of the building, and they're asking for the town to pay the utility bills for a year. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, and we can address it at that time.
Okay. My suggestion, and I will turn this over to the council for comments, is this is something that will have to be taken into consideration. It's a budgetary matter. I appreciate what you're doing, both of you. There is no greater calling than to work with kids, and I speak from the heart and the head. And so, that being said, I will turn this over to council for consideration, but I urge that we use great caution in what we do. Thank you.
Could I, I would like to make a suggestion.
Yes.
Maybe the rest of the council would consider giving like a $5,000 credit on their electricity per year like we used to many years ago, just a credit on the electricity, up to 5,000.
My thought is we've got our town's most precious resources in the audience every week, the people, but more so their children. We have, further down the agenda, we've got a couple roofing issues in town. I wouldn't mind to add that down there to discuss the issue with the roof there, but as far as the utility bill goes, I don't have an issue with making that motion tonight to pay that utility bill for a year, just so people in the audience can see we're looking at the utility bill. For the past 12 months, it has been about $10,300. We have poured money into other situations in town, and I think our kids are very deserving of $10,300.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I spoke to Matthew Vance, who's also on their board.
He's chairman.
He's chairman now, a couple weeks ago, and I've been involved with Teen Venture from the very beginning, and I served on their board in the very beginning, and it's a great organization. And, you know, the vision, always the challenge was going to be to find the money to continue to keep it going, and they've done a very good job of that. However, I think what they faced during COVID was maybe some leadership failure, not on these guys' part, but some other folks there that, you know, and also the fact that you don't have kids there, some of the grants you can't get, some things that they could have got, maybe they didn't get. But I think they have a very good board now. They have a good leader. You know, Matt, he seemed very excited about it. I think he's only been on there for a short period of time, too, but he was very excited when he called me, and I know from the past that we did help pay the utility bill in the beginning to help them get going. And I'll tell you, this budget is, this is a very bare bones budget compared to what it used to be. The directors' pay alone was more than what this budget, pay and benefits alone before, previously, was more than what this budget is. And so I think that if we can help them, I would certainly be in favor of, you know, paying their utility bill, and I know they're going to be good stewards of that, not just leave the heat pump on 80 degrees all night or anything like that. But everybody that's been there has always been a good steward over what has been given. The thing that, and for some of you may not know this, but, and I don't mean to take too much time, Mr. Mayor, but I think this is important.
Yeah. Feel free. I took time.
Teen Venture is, was designed, this is not for every, it is for every student, but the design of that is not for every student. We have a lot of students who are involved in athletics and who are busy after school. The idea and the design of Teen Venture is to be a place for kids who don't play baseball, basketball, football, golf, whatever those things are, but they have other interests. I'm glad to see that they're doing pottery. I think that's wonderful, and you have kids who, I mean, that skate park is amazing. If you haven't been in there, I encourage you to go see it. It's very nice, very nice facility. They have climbing wall, all kinds of stuff. But it was a place that was designed to reach out to kids who may not be involved in an after-school activity, but through scouting, they have a place where they can go and be involved in an after-school activity. So I think it's very important that we're reaching the most kids that we possibly can. That's the whole design of the program. That was designed from the beginning. And as far as the roof is concerned, the building still belongs to us. We need to take care of that, just like any other facility that we have. We need to make sure that, you know, if this roof was leaking, we would fix it, hopefully.
Or heat pumps or anything else.
Yeah, absolutely. We need to make sure we take care of that. But I just, for one, would like to see us be able to pay their utilities for a year while that gives them time to fundraise and to seek different grants without all the pressure of not being able to make their payroll, and I think that's the situation that they've been in in the past few months.
Thank you, Seth. Any other members of council? Doug has weighed in. Laura has weighed in. Seth has weighed in. Any other members of council want to weigh in for Teen Venture? Okay. Do you want to take this in a motion later on or now? Your choice. Counsel?
I'll make the motion that we pay Teen Venture's utility bills for the year.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor, and that would be, just to clarify, that would be electric, water, sewer, and garbage, any utility bills that are paid to the Town of Richlands.
Okay, and I respect that. Do you want to use this figure as... Do you want to use this figure as, and I know, I think I've met you before, I have, as a safeguard against anyone leaving it on, running endlessly, and go with the 10,000?
You feel like that's a good budgeted number, Jim?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to make it?
I think the police department does have a key, so if something did happen, there was water running or whatever, you all could get in.
Okay. I would just suggest that you put a number on it.
I made your motion.
I, I don't mind to do that to him in the motion for the $10,000, and obviously if there's an emergency, we can handle it about.
At that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to pay up to $10,000, let's see what I'm thinking.
Second.
Can we change that to the fiscal year? We can't do that for the whole year, you'd have to do it for the fiscal year, is that right?
Yeah, and we could set that amount and just put it on, and you, you could vote on it, but we can't. You can't roll over to the next.
Just for the July 1st budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, exactly. That's why I was 5,000 instead of, you know.
So, do you mind explaining that for me and everybody else, please?
Well, we won't be able to allocate funds for it without having a fiscal, we can do it for this year, and you can allocate 10,000 or whatever, but if any remainder, you would have to have another motion to allocate for the next.
This will be the fiscal year 2022, 2023?
On the next budget.
Basically what you're saying is, starting now until June 30th, and then July, we would reconsider.
Yes. Okay, thank you Heather. Does anybody understand the parameters of this motion?
We're given that.
All right, so there's a motion by Laura, a second by Seth. Thank you Doug for intervening and helping. And Heather. Anyone else have any thoughts on this before we take a vote? There being no further discussion, Heather, I would ask, I mean, Becca, a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you guys very much.
Young people, before you go, come up here a minute, please, again. I want to talk to you, all of you, all of you, come up. You need your picture taken for one thing. Do you have a camera with you? Jim should have a camera.
Jim's always got a camera.
Jim, can you do a photograph? Come up here and be with the council, please. Come up here behind us. Yeah, come on. Is this working better?
It will work better.
Okay, right here, I backed up. Young man, you guys, get in between us, we'll have it next to everybody. It's not two separate bodies, we're together, it's this. Come on, get up here, come on over here. I want somebody beside me, get over here. Listen to me. Sorry, get in here. Come over here with Jeff and Doug, we need people. This is not a segregated group, this is integration of people. Thank you. All right, you ready guys? John. You'll remember this for the rest of your life. Come on Chris, let's have it.
Don't you all read, because we won't want it to end.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Just needs to come to right here. Okay, that was a real pleasure. Thank you leaders of Teen Venture and the supportive parents, I see Sarah Mayo back there.
As a parent, I was with her since Teen Venture for many, many years, and have kids who aren't involved in traditional sports. I would so appreciate the support from our community, and the skate park is really stereotyped, and there's a lot of potential for the facility. I'm so excited, I'm from Richmond, and I think he'll be a good leader, and is dedicated and wants to stay for the long haul. So thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Okay, we have Roman numeral seven, scheduled public comment, this is a five-minute maximum. Are you ready to do the time? Okay, and Michael, come on up, please. If you'll go to the podium and state your name and address for the benefit of the clerk, that would be appreciated. Thank you, Michael. Do you have pictures to share?
My name is Michael Seismore, address is 216 Youngs Road, Raven, Virginia. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Curry, thank you for your time and allow me to speak today. I'm here to address the state of the water treatment plant here in Richlands, Virginia. The last time our water treatment plant was upgraded was in 1993. The equipment that was placed in the plant at that time has a 15 to 20-year life expectancy. If you do the math, we are currently entering into 2023, which is 30 years, twice as long as 15 years. So, we've had engineers and other people stand up here and address the council, and they have told them that the only reason that our water plant is functioning is because of the hard work of the operators inside of it, which is 100% true. But what the operators inside this plant are doing is shoving galls into a gunshot wound. I've passed some pictures around the council for them to look at, I'm sure all of you haven't seen them yet, but what you will see are filter valves being held open with broomsticks, or held closed, I'm sorry, held closed with broomsticks and with rope tied to the ceiling. This is because the filters do not close as they properly should. The only way to get these filters closed is to prop them closed. Now, if someone from the state of Virginia, Governor Youngkin, or someone from another county came to the Town of Richlands Water Plant and they saw us having to tie filters to the ceiling to get them to close, is that something that would make you proud of our town? Is that something that would make you proud of the facilities that we have in our town? If students, such as the ones that were here today, who are interested in their civic responsibility and providing clean water, and wanting to go into a career in water treatment, came to our plant on a tour and saw operators having to tie filters closed or prop them up with broomsticks to close them, you think that would encourage them to enter into that field? Also, we have a generator sitting on Farmer Street, I'm sure you have seen it, right across from the Catholic Church, big building, it's an ISO right now, it's useless. The reason it is useless, because there are over $100,000 part that has to be replaced to use that. You may be thinking, why do we need a generator for a water plant? Power doesn't go out, but I'm sure many of the council members were living in Richlands during the 1990s when we had multiple power outages throughout the town. Jeff Hurst lived across the street from me on Lee Street. We didn't have power for like, what, three to five days in '95, '96 during a blizzard? During those three to five days, without a generator, all of the tanks in the town would go dry, and all of our citizens would either have to enter to a boil notice or be without water for some amount of time. So, this ta- the town has been granted an amazing amount of money from the federal government. One of the earmarks for that amazing amount of money was for wastewater and water infrastructure, and I've seen none of that go towards wastewater or water infrastructure. Our water treatment plant is falling apart, and every day, all we can do is put a Band-Aid on top of it. It's time to remove the galls from the issue, remove the bullet, and suture the wound. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Well spoken and passionate, and not undue, not undue. So I would urge the council to seriously consider what we can do to improve the situation, to rectify the situation. I don't have an immediate solution other than money, 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 we all want it, and I get that. Thank you, Michael, you made your point, and it's well made. Does the council have any comment on that, or would they like to act on it at a different time during this meeting?
I think with that, when something's set up, E under number eight, to talk about the maintenance of the water.
We do.
I think that's when that needs to be handled.
Okay. Rick suggests that we cover this under Roman numeral eight, item E. It's under wa- water and wastewater?
Is, is, what he discusses why he's on there for discussion.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Rick, thank you John, and Michael, thank you. Okay. I just made a note, Jackson. Aaron Brockovich. Just moving ahead with it. Okay? Thank you, sir. Now, let's move on, we have unscheduled public comments, we have Joella Farmer. Joella, come on up, please, if you don't mind to state your name and address for the benefit of the clerk, that would be very helpful, thank you.
My name is Joella Farmer, I live at 108 Ray Circle.
Okay.
Thank you all for hearing me out, Mayor Curry, Councilman. I've lived up on Ray Circle now for about four years, and we haven't really had any issues until here recently. There is a house there that's abandoned, nobody's lived in it for a good 12 to 15 years. We've had some issues with that, and I would like for the town's help with this, what I could do, what can be done to help the citizens up there. I'm not very familiar what, what can be done, but the problems we're having is there's people trying to squat in the house, we're having some squatters. We've had some issues where the police, and I do want to thank our police department, they have been really wonderful about coming up and helping out and watching, so I really do appreciate that. But my concern is for safety, you know, we have children up there. I don't know exactly what's going on inside that home, but it's obviously not good, and I don't want to speculate, but hypothetically, if something was being made inside that home and it could blow up or anything, and I don't, I don't want that, nobody does. And I would appreciate your time and consideration on this of what can be done. The people that owned it before, I have called the, that their name is still on, the deed and everything. The way I understood it, there is like a mortgage company that has been coming up, they have people come up to mow the grass and stuff, but they're actually not doing that, so that's between them. But it just makes me very nervous with my grandchildren, my children there, and other kids in the community up there playing, and you've got people basically out of their head, just to be blunt.
Joella, are you saying that it's illegally occupied?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There has been people that we've seen down in there, and then they just disappear. And the other evening, we had the police up there, but before the police came, we put up a motion like my neighbor did, down there on his property, and we heard a big boom, and looked over with a flashlight, and there's somebody crawling up in the ceiling.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Officer Hankins, are you familiar with this? Okay. Is there anything you could elaborate on, or would you rather hold that statement at the time being?
Tonight there was a contractor at the house.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, are you aware of this issue? If you'll put that on the to-do list of follow-up, because those are obviously dangerous situations.
I've checked on that too, and it is a dangerous situation. And if you could explore avenues, how we can help these people that live near that house with the town attorney.
I mean, we can look at it, but we've got, you know, a list of properties like this that we're trying to, you know, we can add it to our list to continue to, you know, look at, and there's several that, you know, we've discussed, you know, over the last year and a half, two years, that is something that we've, you know, we're working on code enforcement to try to, we do what we can, but really, we're kind of limited, but we can continue to.
Could you take them one at a time, I mean?
It comes down to your money, you know, are we willing to spend the money to, you tear them down? Sometimes, you know, selling them for foreclosure process isn't really an option, but it's something that you will pursue and look into.
I would suggest to, sorry Seth, I would suggest to confer with Officer Hankins, because he is aware of a contractor up there, so maybe, and I don't know anything about it.
And each one's different, yes.
In this particular instance, maybe there's, there's progress being made that the town in general isn't aware of, but I would suggest that you get with Mr. Hankins, and can you let us know at the next council meeting, John?
I'll follow up.
Any other thoughts, Seth?
I was just going to say, if they're sending a contractor out, they're probably getting ready to foreclose, or they've already foreclosed, maybe they're getting ready to sell the property, so hopefully that'd be a, that's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer, thank you very much, and we feel your concerns. Next, Morgan, Morgan? Jeff's going to be your timekeeper, so come on up. Morgan, do you mind to state your name and address, please?
Morgan Hurd, 1618 Sixth Street. I'll throw this out there, yesterday, I turned 23, so one year, 23 years later, can't believe I made it this far. So, one thing I do want to discuss is that Mom Janet Erp, she was a dispatcher for the town for 22 years, and a few officers, Frank, Officer Whitehead, Sheriff back there, all know her personally. And she was concerned because she won't call 911 on non-emergency matters. So, and we live right next to some rough individuals, and I get worried sometimes. And I tell her, well, if it's something important like that, call 911. And she's like, I won't call 911 because it's not an emergency, I just wanted to check up on it. So she wants to know if there's going to be any like, any way for non-emergency matters for where she can call and say, have an officer come around and look if there was going to be any, anything like that in place. And second of all, she was, and I was, we were concerned because our utility bill for our electricity was, back in, back in June, it was like $185, and this past month, it was 300, 310. And we used less electricity than we did back in June, and we were just wondering, how come rates have gone up like that? All right? That's all I got.
Morgan, thank you, I will address one thing, as far as the 911, I think there's going to be quite a bit of discussion on how that would be managed, so I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that right now. Thank you, and we thank your mother for her service to this town.
Thank you.
As a British citizen? Thank you, and an American citizen, both. Does she have dual citizenship?
She does have dual citizenship.
Thank you. Is she bemoaning the Queen?
Do what?
Is she mourning for the Queen?
Yeah, the whole week.
Thank you. I believe that concludes unscheduled public comments, I didn't have anyone else. Okay, so we're moving on. Yes. Do you want to speak at unscheduled public comments? Lauren, come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Lauren Brown, and I'm an attorney here in Richlands, and I'm here on behalf of my client, which is the Tassel County Public Library Board of Trustees under Roman numeral eight, line item L. Think that council will be addressing the library project funding, and the funds for the renovation of the exterior of the library have already been approved. So I'm just here on behalf of my client to pass out a memorandum of understanding that's already been provided to Michael Thomas and John O'Daniel. Oh, great, well, you've already got a copy of it. So I'm just here to reconcile the bid packet, or the request for bids, that was sent out on behalf of the project, and the funding that was already approved, so.
Lauren, I suggest, and thank you for speaking, I didn't have you on there, and I apologize, but we have this coming up under Roman numeral eight, under L, library project funding. So maybe we could do a more comprehensive discussion of it at that time, is that okay?
That is, thank you.
Thank you Lauren, very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, may I have a copy of that? I actually don't have it in my packet, I'm not sure if anyone else does.
No, we, none of us have it, do we? Oh wait, where is it? Did you pass it?
I had like eight copies sitting on my phone.
That's Jeff's fault.
Yeah, I had them, sorry.
It's okay. I had one.
Oh, Doug had them.
There's a, there's a few more of us over here.
Let me get one here now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Lauren. Okay, we'll talk about this under Roman numeral eight, L. Okay, let me attach this right here. Thank you. Sir. Uh, yes, we have quite a few here. Jeff will pass them to you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now we're moving on to Roman numeral eight, agenda items. We have quite a few. The first one is the creation of a B3 zone, the first reading. And if you will please look in your packets that were distributed, maybe some of these things here. In your council packet, we have an ordinance before us. It's ordinance O-2022-0901. Make sure everybody has that in front of them. I'm looking for a very good reader. Thank you. Be honored. I know you are, Jeff. So we have before us an ordinance to consider, and we need a first reading, so I will prevail upon Jeff Hurst, who is an excellent reader. I tease him, but that's, we all are, but he reads very rapidly.
Ordinance number O-2022-0901, amendment to existing ordinance title 15, land usage, chapter 154 zoning, Town of Richland zoning districts. Be it ordained by the council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia, that pursuant to 5.7 of the Town Charter and 154.05A and 154.205 of the Town of Richlands Code of Ordinances, that it hereby enacts the following amendments to chapter 154 of title 15, land usage of the Town Code of Ordinances. In order to create new zoning district, business expanded general B3, and to establish the necessary criteria for development of real property and to conduct business in the newly created zone within the corporate limits of the town, 154.015 generally. A, for purpose of this chapter, the incorporated areas of the town are hereby divided into the following districts. One, residential limited, R1. Two, residential general, R2. Three, business general, B2. Four, business expanded general, B3. Five, industrial general, M1. Six, agricultural general, A1. And seven, conservation special, C-1. B, the subsection remains unchanged by the amendments to this section. Business expanded general district B-3, 154.080, statement of intent. Generally, this district covers that portion of the community intended for the conduct of general business to which the public requires direct and frequent access, but which is not characterized either by constantly having trucking other than stocking and delivery of light retail goods, or by any nuisance factors other than occasional, by incidental light or noise of congregation of people and passenger vehicles. Additionally, this district is created to allow for an expansion of general business applications within the town, the location established for which is not designated for location or use in existing district B-2. 154.081, use regulations. In business district B3, structures to be erected or land to be used shall be for all uses as designated as allowable in district B-2 and for the following uses. A, hospital special care with a special exemption permit. 154.082, area regulations. A, none except for permitted uses utilizing individual sewage disposal systems. The required area for any such use shall be approved by the Town Health Official or the Tassell County Health Department. B, the administrator may require a greater area if considered necessary by the Town Health Official or the Tassell County Health Department. 154.083, setback regulations. Buildings shall be located 35 feet or more from the center line of any street right-of-way, except that signs advertising sale or rent of premises may be erected upon the property line. This shall be known as a setback line. 154.084, frontage and yard regulations. For permitted uses, the minimum space adjoining or adjacent to a residential district shall be 10 feet, and off-street parking shall be in accordance with the provisions contained herein. 154.085, height regulations. Buildings may be erected at 35 feet high, 35 feet in height from grade, except that A, the height limit for buildings may be increased up to 45 feet and up to three stories, provided there are two side yards for each permitted use, each of which is 10 feet or more, plus one foot or more of side yard for each additional foot of the building height over 35 feet. B, a public or semi-public building such as a school, church, library, general hospital, or hospital special care may be erected to a height of 60 feet from grade, provided that the required front, side, and rear yards shall be increased one foot for each foot in height over 35 feet. C, church spires, belfries, cupolas, monuments, water towers, jimmies, flues, flagpoles, television antennas, or radio arrows are exempt. Parapet walls may be up to four feet above the height of the building of which the walls rest. And D, no accessory structure which is within 10 feet of any property lot line shall be more than one story high. All accessory structures shall be less than the main structure in height. Do we want to read the?
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. The amendment?
So we have a first reading. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? The, one of the key things here is on the first page, under A4, it's in italics, business expanded general B3. That is the key to this ordinance right here.
Does the, it says three stories high. Would that conflict with anything?
It doesn't affect an existing structure.
It doesn't affect it. This would be anything built, Doug. This is.
The existing is grandfathered in?
This, this, I try to introduce things best I can, and I may be wrong. The language here is language we have used consistently. The only real addition to this, Doug, is right here, A4. See, it's in italics. That's the only change. We've had this language for a long time.
Essentially still the same as B2, that it was previously zoned.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I was just wondering if it was higher than three stories, would that be a problem?
We're in good shape. Yes, sir.
I've got a question. These people's want to open their business. How long are we gonna keep them alive?
We're not.
Oh, we're not. We can pass as a special, as an emergency. Yeah, as an emergency.
Well, let me, I'll confer with the attorney. I'm concerned, too. We'll have, we've had a first reading, and then we can dispense with the second reading and pass this as an emergency measure to not, if that is the will of the council. The second ordinance is this one that we just wrote it in, right here. It's 02022-0902. It's one of the handles to us. Okay, so you can. We, he handed it to us. So this one creates the zoning map, and there are two different ordinances, but we have to pass them both. So, yeah, so two separate votes. So my suggestion is to move forward with this first ordinance right here, Rick, O1, and have discussion and a vote on this, and dispense with the second reading and pass it as an emergency measure, if that is the will of council. And then we'll tackle this one, so that we can move forward.
And if everything goes as the mayor's described, then they would apply for the conditional use permit, and that would be approved at the next council meeting. So they'd, in theory, as soon as they could get it, it would be next council meeting.
We're just paving the way for them to be able to do that, and they said they were good with that, too.
Are you good with the report?
Yes.
It's a fair question.
Yes.
These zoning issues get very complex.
And the planning commission, do you want to mention their recommendation?
The planning commission recommended the council adopt the B3 resolution and the map ordinances as written.
Yeah. So Kristen, who is representing the planning commission, she's council's representative to the commission, has a statement here, and she just read it to you. They're recommending that we move forward in adopting it. But by procedure, we have to.
I think you made a motion.
Have a reading. And you, did you make a motion?
I made, I made the motion for the 02-022-0901.
Is this to, let's get it right, Mike.
You need to dispense with the second reading first.
A motion to dispense with the second reading?
That's correct.
That's what you want to say?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
He makes a motion to dispense with the second reading.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
And Seth makes the second. Is there any discussion on the second reading? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Now, the office of the mayor would entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance 0O-2022-0901 as an emergency measure.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, Mr. Mayor.
And Seth makes the second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to explain to people, sometimes people don't understand why it's being passed as an emergency. And I just want people to understand the reason that we are passing this as an emergency is because there's an existing, there's a business who's ready to open, and they are waiting on us to pass this, and that's why generally I'm not for everything as an emergency ordinance, but in this case, we've got a business waiting to open, and Richlands needs businesses open.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion here? So we have a motion and a second.
And I'll just throw it out there that there was a, I know I've said this the last meeting, but there was a definition for hospital special care that was found in the Richlands Town Code, but was not applicable in any of the zones. It didn't fit in Richland zoning. So what we're here for today is to include it into the zoning map somewhere. So what we've done is we've adopted a, well, presented a B3 zone for that to fit into the B3 zone.
Thank you, Mike. So we have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, no further discussion to pass ordinance O-2022-0901 as an emergency measure. Roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 This motion is unanimous. This ordinance, O-2022-0901, has been passed as an emergency measure. We now have another ordinance to take up in conjunction with this movement, and this is ordinance 02022-0902. Okay. 0902. And we need a reading, a first reading. Wes, Seth, Jeff, would you read this for us, please?
Absolutely. Ordinance number 02-022-09-02, amendment to the existing ordinance. Title 15, land usage, chapter 154 zoning, Town of Richland zoning map. Be it ordained by the council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia, that it hereby enacts the following changes to the Town of Richland zoning map pursuant to 154-0, or .015B and 154.205 of the Town of Richlands, Virginia Code of Ordinances, in order to reclassify the zoning designations of certain parcels of real property located within the town as identified below, and to reconfigure the Town of Richland zoning map accordingly. Tax parcel numbers, 105A-509, 0137 through 0146, 0188 through 0207, 105A-509, 0184 through 0187, 05A-509, 0184A, 05A-5A, 0012, 05A-5A, 0013, 05A-5A, 0016, 105A-5A, 0016C, 105A-5A, 0016A, and 105A-5A, 0016B. Reclassify from business general district B2 to business expanded district B3. All of the designations as indicated on the zoning map of the Town of Richlands remains unchanged. Ordinance 02-022-09-02.
Thank you, Seth. So this is the first reading. Is there a motion to, looking for counsel, Mike? I think the will of the council, I'm sensing, is to move forward. So should we ask for dispensing?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to dispense the second reading of ordinance 02-022-09-02.
Okay. There is a motion to dispense with the second reading of ordinance 2022-0902. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a second by Laura, motion made by Seth. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, Becca, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 This motion is unanimous. Now, is there a motion to move forward and adopt this as an emergency measure?
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Seth makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Laura makes the second. This is a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-0902 as an emergency measure. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Becca, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 This motion carries unanimously, and so we have moved forward in, with the careful work of council and especially the planning commission. Kristen, be sure to thank the members of the commission for their diligent work and thinking on how to improve our business community. So, the next item on the agenda is Roman numeral eight, B, appointment of a police chief. John, do you have an update that you would like to share with us?
So we had seven applications. We brought three of the candidates in, did interviews. I have a name. I'm ready to present tonight. Traditionally, we start some of the background and the drug screening. Sometimes we get that before the candidate is hired, sometimes we don't, but I wanted to leave it up to you all. If you're fine with moving forward, I'll go ahead and let you know who the name is that we're ready to present, and then we can move from there. But if you all are fine with moving forward.
So you have a name to present, but not all of the background check is here? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we, you know, we've started those, you know, those processes that we do for our standard employment, but we haven't received the results yet. Okay, so it's been completed by the person that's doing the background. We just haven't received the final version.
Okay. What is the will of council?
Mr. Mayor, I think we just move forward tonight.
I think that's consensus of the board. We, the name is Ron Holt. I don't believe he was able to make it, but that's who, you know, we will be nominated for this position to get confirmed by council.
Are you asking, are you putting that forth as your choice?
That's the recommendation.
Okay, council. John O'Daniel, Town Manager, is putting forth the name of Ron Holt as his recommendation. Is there any discussion on this? I think we should take a vote. We will have to take a vote.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
We will need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we hire Ron Holt as our new police chief.
Okay, Seth has made the motion to hire Ron Holt. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion at the second.
That would be to confirm John's appointment.
To confirm.
I'm in my motion to confirm John's appointment.
Thank you, Mike, for helping us with the wording. We want it to be right. We appreciate that. So there's a motion to confirm John's recommendation by Seth and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion at this time? There being no discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote. Becca.
Yes.
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 You know, I've thought about this a long time. I don't know Mr. Holt. He has a great background. His resume is exceptional. His, his credentials are great. But I have some reservation about the fact that this job was only posted for two weeks, that we only interviewed three out of seven of the candidates. I feel like we have rushed things, and we have not spent time thinking this through or speaking with the people that are going to be the most involved, who work the police station with whoever this is going to be. I think it's a very important position, and I just feel like we should have spent a little bit more time before we rush into things. I've fielded concerns from citizens, from members of the police department, from previous members of the police department, from members of other police departments who are concerned that this isn't the, possibly the best choice. So for that reason, I'm, I feel like I have to vote no.
Thank you. Continue, Becca.
I vote yes.
I didn't know we were gonna speak before the vote, but I just want to say this was not a decision taken lightly by.
I didn't know we were going to speak before the vote, but I just want to say this was not a decision taken lightly by any of us sitting here. It was not something that was rushed into. The only reason that we did kind of have to fast track is because the town has to keep moving. This was the best decision. I know I can lay my head down at night knowing that this town is going to be and continue to be in safe hands. We're a resilient town. We are going to keep moving forward with Chief Ron Holt, and I vote yes.
Thank you. So the motion carries five to one. So congratulations to Mr. Holt and John. I assume you will take care of all the due diligence and making sure he is sworn in.
All right, we will.
And anything that, when the results come back, would you please share those with council?
We will. Or we'll let you know that there was no issues. We can't, you share the results. But we'll let you know there's no issues.
Well, that's what I'm understanding of.
No news is good news.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Okay, next. C, Electric Battery Discussion. Close session if needed for contract negotiation. I am assuming that Alice and Garrett are here for this?
Correct.
Okay. Alice, Garrett, can you hear us? Hello, Alice. Nice to see you this evening. Garrett?
We can see you.
Okay, now we can all see one another. Thank you, good evening.
Garrett, before we start, we're still open, we're still in open session. So when we get to the part that the utilities will be in closed session, just let us know, and we will transition to that if we still need to do anything in closed session.
Yeah, I think there is a couple matters that we will, if we've got it in closed session, but we're not just going to vote. All right, sounds good. Well, that's, all right, I'll go ahead and get started with a couple of introductory comments. You know, this project is something we started working on a year ago. So last September, Garrett and I were in person in Richland. And so it's taken a year to work through the process, but I think this has been a very good process. A year ago, we were in talking about how there were five other Blue Ridge members who thought that they would be, wanted to work together on requests for proposals for utilities, scale batteries. And we thought Richland would benefit joining in that process. So we had spent the last year working through that. Started with a large number of developers who responded to proposals. We gradually whittled that down. We had developers visiting the site, so they know exactly what they're looking at, what they're getting into. And now we're nearing the end of negotiations on this process. This type of project is exactly why the agency was formed by the members, so that you could work together on projects that would benefit your customers. And I would say this type of project is not one that an APCO would be likely to do. Really, when you see these type of peak shaving projects, peak shaving for capacity and transmission is much more common among municipalities and cooperatives. The APCOs and Dominion can receive those capacity and transmission charges as something that they can pass through to their customers. So they don't have a lot of incentive to try to cut those costs back, whereas Richland and the other Blue Ridge members do. And this has, I think, been a very good process. It's been thorough, it's been sophisticated, we worked hard at it. And it's been very cost effective. So Richland shared just a portion of the overall RFP with the other Blue Ridge members. Every community that participated made a share of it. So there's a benefit in how the RFP was conducted. And then also a benefit in the final pricing that you'll see for actually leasing the batteries. So with that kickoff, we'll turn it over to Garrett and look forward to hearing your thoughts.
All right, thanks, Alice. I'd be happy to share the screen if I'm enabled while you all are able to do that. I did want to mention that we have been in an RFP process. It's been a competitive process. Grateful for the town extending the opportunity and entrusting the opportunity to go through it. We've seen a very competitive offering. We came to you throughout the process to pay you, which included times during the spring, blows last year. And then more recently, to give you details, this will be the third visit. We started on July 12th. And even in that visit, we had economics for the project that was easily substantiate the project. We shared on August 23rd, one week after the president signed into law the Inflation Reduction Act, that there was significant value savings associated with that happening while our process was already in motion. So can't take credit for that, but we are certainly grateful that that happened in process and represented a significant saving for the project through investment tax credit to the Town of Richland. And of all the Blue Ridge members, Richland was actually situated to benefit the most from the Inflation Reduction Act of all the members. They get a 40% benefit associated rather than 30%, as we described last time, associated with being in a region of a retired coal plant that offers additional economic development opportunities. So the opportunity of participating in storage has now improved. And this has been a conversation more broadly that we've been speaking about for a number of years. How do we avoid transmission costs? What can we do to continue to offset those costs? This has been an important part of our discussion throughout. And so I just bring that up in knowledge that we've been at this for a while and we've had some really good appearances here in the process. If you all can see my screen, I'm just going to take this opportunity again to reiterate just a few slides of information. Share what has changed since August 23rd. We have been negotiating this agreement with finalists, and we want to come to a selection tonight. We are still in the middle of final stages of competitive negotiation. And for that reason, there will be an item or two that we'll share in closed session. But predominantly, we can share the benefits and the compelling aspect of the project here in closed session. Again, on the screen here, you see our 2 megawatt 2-hour duration battery that will be located at original substation as we shared before, and the anticipated COB for a 15-year term with the battery in June of 2024 today. The cost comparison economically, or as we shared with you on August 23rd, and the economics have improved since the July 12th assumption as we shared. We're on the far right-hand column where we're focused, which means Richland benefits from peak avoidance of transmission charges and capacity charges throughout the future, and also benefits from the ability to enable the developer to participate in ancillary markets and in the market around us, which is called PJM. And so at the substation, we will take significant advantage. And I'll just draw your attention to the levelized cost in millions of dollars on a net present value basis. $3 million on July 12th, and that's all the way down to a levelized of 1.87 million in under the present proposal. So we've seen some significant benefits from the investment tax credit and the finalist pricing represents, you know, pricing that we're really proud of and excited for you all. Again, the message here is to avoid the base AP transmission costs and reduce the customer bills for electric corresponding them. I do want to just point out, the competitive process here, we're in the final stages of dotting i's and crossing t's here. And there are some key elements of this. In the last discussion, we didn't want to get too deep into this, but in this one, I do want to reveal some of the details that tend to be important to us. When will the project come on run? June 1st to 24th is the proposed year. To the extended delay, we have security in the contract and delay damages that we can argue for if we're not causing those delays and developers are a little bit party for delays. The security levels are very high, and so are the damage levels. We've been able to secure these because of the nature of how high AP transmission costs are. And these were difficult to negotiate, but we were successful because of those reasons. The capacity is guaranteed for the 15-year term. It will be the developers to manage of that 2 megawatts while the battery can degrade and does. It'll be their responsibility to augment the battery need in the substation, and they'll have access in order to keep us at 2 megawatts in 2-hour duration throughout the term. That's important to us, continuing to achieve our objective of avoiding costs at times of peak demand. Finally, there are performance guarantees as we get into the contract. One of those very important guarantees is to avoid the peak demand. One of the key provisions of our agreement is the nature by which we're compensated in the event that the unit is not available and we call upon a peak, call upon for a peak and it's not available. This is an important provision and one we're happy to have negotiated. In this case, if we miss a PJM peak for each one that we, they, we miss at calls of the unit not being available, we're compensated per megawatt of missed PJM peaks that's the full value of those anticipated peak values throughout the term. We're also compensated if a transmission peak has occurred. And that transmission peak is determined to date on an annual basis. So it's an even greater number of potential economic impact if it's missed and it has 12 months worth of impact. One of the things here, we can discuss details in closed session regarding specific impact to liquidated damages, but these are important provisions because we want to be compensated if the unit isn't available for our specific peak, for our specific peak data. And so these provisions are addressed in these agreements. They are important. We want to have a strong counterparty and strong credit, and then correspondingly, the security to support that. So I just point out that the attorneys at McArthur English, as well as ourselves, the TDF, in conjunction with Blue Ridge have gone through this agreement and are right at the end stages here and feel confident in what we're about to proceed with here by the end of September. Before I press any further, as a conclusion to my next slide, I just want to mention the general conclusions are that these economics are favorable. They provide a significant net benefit. AP transmission costs are nearly double, more than, nearly double on their own with prices. You know, we would be paid for this storage after all of our investment credit and, and where it's done. That's significant. And represents an opportunity here, as we say, in the second bullet, to reduce our costs for AP transmission and ultimately reduce customer costs on the electric side, which is something we all want to do. Our role is to execute this agreement by the end of the month. And so confidence of the FCS in this matter, I know we've been mentioning that over the last couple of months. So appreciate your attention to that. But just want, John, I take a motion to share some additional details in closed session if that's in the council.
Could I ask one question before we do that?
Yes, you may.
Before we had an 80% to catch the peaks, now you're saying that we're guaranteed 100% with the agreement that you have with the company?
Can you repeat that question? I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm catching the reference to 80% and 100%.
Okay, before we had talked about that it had an 80% rate that it would catch those peaks and maybe miss 20% when the peaks came. Okay, you said a few minutes ago that they guarantee that if they miss any, that they will back those up and pay the damages. So to me, you would be moving from an 80% rate to 100% that we couldn't miss any of the peaks. Is that correct?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for asking that, that question. Let me, let me clarify the intent of what I'm sharing there. First, in a previous conversation, one of our council meetings, I mentioned that built-in probability of getting these peaks averages in the neighborhood of 85% for, you know, hitting peaks. And, you know, that's a really good probability, but it's building into the expectations of our economics, where we don't have 100% probability of hitting peaks built in the economics. We have slightly lower than that. With, with the damage calculation, there's a nuance there. And that is that they are agreeing to pay damages if the unit isn't available when we call upon it for a peak. And if the, if the time in which we called it ends up being one, that is the absolute specific definition of when we actually want those damages. If we call upon it, it lands on a peak and it, you know, it ends up being that peak, and they weren't available for reasons of an outage, could be the inverter, could be something with a storage unit, whatever it might be, those damages are something that we want to be able to accrue at that time. So it's not, it's not related to the probability of hitting it. They'll pay damages if we call on the unit and in that event, there wasn't a peak. So to these, we have, we predict a peak, we turn, you know, turn the unit on, and if it doesn't come on for reason of availability issues on their end, then they're going to be responsible to us for damages.
Who makes the call to turn it on?
Yep, so as part of the Blue Ridge group, we will be making peak predictions of both the AP transmission peak and the PJM 5, 5 highest peaks in summer. These peaks are fairly predictable. You can, we have a total of 150 cycles that can be utilized per year by contract. And we really see ourselves in the range of 50 to 75 of those cycles being utilized in order to hit some peaks. Again, with the probability of 85%, but that's a day ahead type of decision, and it's based on forecasted load. Load is being forecasted by, by region. And so we have insight into the market forecast for load. So when you get towards the hotter days, you have that intelligence of the next day, what's, what's the approximate level of load? And you have a threshold methodology to make sure you're, you're bringing the storage unit on and then you might experience peaks. And so for the AP transmission peak, but the system peak on PJM, that's something that will be carried out at Blue Ridge level for each of the involved members.
So Blue Ridge makes the call, right?
No, no, probably not.
Could you sit?
Yeah, I can, I can take that one. We would probably have someone who is looking at the forecast for us, making sure they're checking it regularly to get a little bit more detail, a little bit more insight than the tools we have here at Blue Ridge. Blue Ridge just doesn't have all of that data available on hand. So we would, whoever signs up for the battery project and actually goes forward with it, we would look as a group to hire someone to provide that peak notification service on our behalf.
They helped you, Doug.
That did, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Alice and Garrett. Okay, I believe the suggestion was at this juncture, you would like to go into executive session, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm looking at our attorney. We have closed session if needed, 2.2 dash, is this correct one? Okay, so we will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to 2.2-3711A6, Contract Negotiation. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, can we add an additional item? Do you have the code section for that?
Yes, it'd be, this would just be to piggyback off of this as well, as far as a potential sale. That would be the 2.2-3711A8.
Do you mind repeating that? I'm going to write it down, please.
2.2-3711A8. 2.2-3711A8. It'll be consultation with legal counsel.
Thank you.
All right, so we have, we have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to two codes. Is that correct, ladies and gentlemen? All right, 2.2-3711A6 and 2.2-3711A8, contract negotiation and consultation, legal consultation. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
Is the second one, is that for the emergency services?
No, that's an update legal consultation. It piggybacks off of this discussion.
Okay, we'll have to do the other one then, okay. I mean, do you want to do all the?
I think what he's trying to, I don't know. Seth, what you want to do?
No, this is all, I just want to keep these two things together because they're related, yes.
Okay.
But we can go later into another closed session, is that what you're?
I'm not sure what you mean, Doug.
I think we need a closed session on emergency services, don't we? Well, I would like to have one.
Well, that would be a different, a different angle.
Did you do them all at once or did you do it later?
Whatever, it doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter. I mean, I just thought since we're in there, do we want to talk about all of them or do it later? It doesn't matter.
My, my, I compartmentalize things if it's okay. Can we do these two since they're related?
Sure.
And then we can come back later and go back into executive session.
Sure.
So we have a motion, did someone make a motion to go?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seth makes the motion and Laura seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 The motion carries. I would ask that people in the audience step into the corridor so we can continue to communicate with Garrett and Alice. Thank you. Thank you for your understanding.
Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Now we need a motion to reconvene an open session, and in so doing, you are certifying that nothing was discussed other than 2.2-3711A6 and 2.2-3711A8. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Jeff moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kristin seconds. You're certifying that nothing was discussed other than what was proper. Becca, roll call vote please.
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Is there any action that council would like to take at this time?
As far as I can make a motion. I make, I move that we go forward with the bidder that Blue Ridge has recommended contingent upon attorney review and final approval of council before signing the final contract.
Perfect. Thank you, Doug. There is the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kristin seconds. Any discussion? There be no discussion, I would ask her roll call vote please.
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. So thank you very much, John and Mike. You may move forward.
All right.
Okay. The next thing we have is item D, utility rate scheduled discussion.
Essentially, this is a follow-up from last month. We had VDH kind of speak on, you know, we looked at delaying the rate increases. From what she said, it sounded like it was her recommendation that we go ahead and do those rate increases. So based on that, I assume that council wants us to go ahead and start that process and do the public hearing starting next month. If not, I want your direction if that's not what council wants us to do for the water and sewer rates.
Okay. Do any questions from John or John?
Say that one more time if you want.
Essentially, the water and sewer rates that weren't adopted in June will be considered adopting those, you know, starting that process of, you know, a couple of months to do that. I believe there was also a garbage rate increase in the rate schedule that wasn't adopted as well. That's, it will be in there. Essentially ought to be presenting what was presented when we started the budget for this year.
I don't have any desire to do that.
I don't either.
Is there any action from council?
So the consensus is do not do any rate increases at this time?
No.
Consensus? Does anybody feel differently?
How would that affect our grants moving forward?
It doesn't affect our grants according to VDH.
It does not. The, the packet that we were given, I don't know how many of you guys read this thing, but I did. One of the pages that I wanted to mark, to bring up, was that in this great rates thing, it says specifically that it does not, that we should accept a grant, but that these rates are not contingent upon that grant. It says the point is, while $400,000 is a large sum of money and you should accept such a grant, if it came along, it would have little effect on the rates that customers would pay. And because of that and other issues with the rates, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with them at that time.
Any other questions? Thoughts? Members of council? All questions are fair.
Then we'll just table that till next budget discussion.
I think that's
I think that's appropriate.
what council's directing. Thank you, John. Next, water and wastewater plant maintenance.
Okay, so the wastewater, I'll simplify that. They've had a issue with essentially a piece of equipment that removes the lick, you know, the water from solids so then they can haul it off and be disposed of. We've, I think we've got it fixed. They've been working on that all week, but we think it's finally back up and running. There may be some additional maintenance or having an expert come in just to look at that to make sure it's going to continue to run for us until we do the, you know, potential of the larger upgrade projects. But for the water, as was mentioned earlier, they have three valves that really need to be replaced. They're to the point where they, sometimes they can get them closed, sometimes they can't. When they don't close completely, the next morning, they spend about two hours flushing back through the filters to clean those, so then they can begin processing the water. So, you know, there's two hours, you know, every few days, you know, wasted time to basically clean that so then they can start producing the water. So that's, they're really, their biggest concern, you know, when those valves finally do give, I think right now we're looking at probably about five to six month wait time, even if we ordered them today. So they've essentially asked, could we go ahead and order those now? And they may not even come until next year's budget, but, you know, that, as part of that, we'd also have to do some battery backups on those if we did lose power. So we wanted to kind of have a discussion on, do we go ahead and do the upgrade for the generator so that if we lose power, that switch is fixed and the whole system is, the whole plant's, you know, fed by electricity if we do have that outage. Their recommendation was to do with the generator, so it's about 145,000 to 155,000 if we go that route for the three valves and then the generator switch. The other option is about 45,000. It would be the three valves and then battery backup just for those. Eventually, we have other valves that will have to be replaced and want to buy additional battery backups for those. So I just wanted to kind of start that conversation with you all and see, you know, what the direction of council is. There, you know, there are some things else that they need down there, but these are the most critical things that they
How much was the battery backup? Sorry.
The battery backup's about 25,000, so total is about 45 for the three valves plus the battery backup.
John, is this addressing, are these technical points you're talking about addressing some of the concerns that Michael put forth?
Yeah, that, these address the main concerns he addressed. The only other big item is their high flow pump. They've got two of them. One of them is much older, so if the main one is not working or they're having to repair it, we have to use the backup. It doesn't pump nearly as fast, so we're have to go from, you know, a 10, 12 hour shift to 24 hour shift to keep up with the amount of water pumping into the system. So at some point, you know, we're going to have to look at replacing that other pump just to keep up with the day-to-day
What we're talking about is potable drinking water for our citizens.
Is that the 145 you're talking about all?
No, the 145 is just for the three valves and the generator upgrades, so then it can, because we have the generator out there, but it's to a point where it doesn't provide backup power to the plant.
Okay.
So upgrade it so that it could or replace the parts that are necessary there.
We should, I mean, we should do all that.
And quote for pump, how much, John?
I don't have a quote for the pump. I would have to get that, but I would, I would think those are pretty expensive.
Let me ask you a question. So this doesn't sound like stuff that broke yesterday. And why, why is this not, did we not replace this because we were planning on building a new plant?
We're trying to hold off until we, you could get the, you know, the upgrades and
I don't know that that, I mean, that just doesn't seem like good logic. I mean, I know that they spent, because, okay, let's just say that even we had voted to go ahead and build, to do that. That's going to take another, you know, six months to get started, equipment coming. I mean, you're, you're looking at, we're two years out from that if we said do it today before that'd be even finished. I mean, these are things that have to be repaired. And I, and we spent a million dollars on engineering. We probably could have retrofitted the whole plant as is and for a whole lot less than what we spent just on engineering something that now we're not even going to bid. I mean, I don't know, and also looking at that, because we're spending $6,000 a month on interest carry on a million dollars that we borrowed. If you, if it's going to cost, let's say that, I don't know how much that pump is, maybe it's 100,000, maybe it's 250. Why don't we look at refinancing the debt for the engineering that you all did with the new costs? It's not going to cost that much more and refinance that as one debt package so that we're not paying out cash that we don't have, but we go ahead and get this done. So my suggestion would be, get the quote on the pump, like Rick said, then we can look at refinancing that as a whole debt package, and we may be able to go to Virginia Resource Authority. and we may be able to go to Virginia Resource Authority to do that since we're buying equipment for the plant, refinancing that engineering debt. We might be able to do that because we need to pay for that. We're just paying interest carry on it right now. And I'm assuming that the long-term goal, when we do the upgrade to the plant, would be to roll that into the debt package for the plant. I'm assuming that's what, that's what's going to happen. But in the interim, we're going to have to continue to do the interest carry on that debt. And it makes more sense to go ahead and spend the money to, to get the plant operational so they're not doing, I mean, some pretty crazy stuff down there to keep it going.
What my suggestion is, I'll keep it really general. We need to have a plant. I'm really thinking what Michael said. We're not trying to tie, prop it up with brims and tie it with rags or whatever it was. We don't want that. So we need to move in a direction that would move away from that into a modern, well-kept facility. Council, what's your action? What action do you want to take here?
I think we direct the, the town manager to get the quote on the pump, which is the only piece that he doesn't have of that. And then once we know the totals, you know, to move forward and go ahead and order the valves, the, the only question I would have about the generator is, is that something that's going to last for a while if we buy this part to fix it?
I'd probably have to ask somebody, you know, that works the electric department and what, you know, the age of it and what their thoughts are. I know Rick and I talked about it the other day. He felt that it was a pretty solid generator because it hasn't been, doesn't have that many hours on it, but.
I mean, I'd just say, yeah, have someone that knows that check. Just to make sure, is this something that, you know, we're going to spend this much to fix it? Is that okay? Is that acceptable? But I think we just direct John tonight to get us a quote, but go ahead and order the valves and order the parts that you need. And then as a separate piece of that, we look at refinancing that debt package, either with Virginia Resource Authority or with local financing to pay for it.
Is that a switcher that they, that's a switcher, right?
It's a, yes, switch gear control retrofit.
Okay. That's going to run about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So you would include.
Well, that was included in that one with the valves.
But we save the, you know, twenty, the twenty-five thousand just for those three valves and the battery backup. You know, so it's kind of, you, if you replace the valves, you've got to do one or the other.
Oh, the switcher alone is a hundred and thirty-five.
I mean, I say do it. If it's going to last for a few years, you know, go ahead and do that. But the pump thing, we don't know how much that is.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Rick wants to say something. Go ahead, Rick.
John, my recommendation on this is you talk to Caterpillar. They do all the generators. That's who does the hospital. Have them to come and evaluate this generator for us. And if they don't think it's, you know, suitable, we need, when we do this financing, we need a new generator to go with that. I mean, what it costs because without electricity, we'll have water, I mean, we won't have water for a long time, you know?
And I think that's who we've had work on it, you know, because they just had to do some more work into it with anticipation of you doing this retrofit to make sure it could do it, but we can reach out to them.
Yeah, make sure it's going to last for a while. We spend that kind of money. Let's make sure it's going to last. I'm good with that.
John, do you have direction? Do you know what council wants? Would you like it in a motion?
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to get all.
I think we need a motion. Seth, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we direct the town manager to order the valves that are needed. And after assessing the generator situation, to go ahead and order the switch if that's going, you know, based on his discretion and conversation with Caterpillar. And to get a cost on the pump and to go ahead and get the pump as well.
Generator?
For the generator. No, that's, that's separate pumps for the water. And then if we don't know the cost of that. And then also, subsequent to that, to look at a financing package to refinance the engineering debt and the new equipment purchase if that's possible through Virginia Resource Authority or another financial institution.
Becca, were you able to get all that?
Nowhere to walk, we're going to have to have a pump and valves again.
At some point, yeah.
Okay.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
That is in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it, Becca.
Rick seconds. Any more discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, members of council. Okay, now we have F is Economic Community Development Department discussion. We've had this before. Is there any thought about this or do you want to move on?
Move on.
Members of council.
Move on.
John, you want to say something?
I mean, is that, is that just that we're not going to hire or we're going to table?
I would, my, my thought is, I had asked you before, we have a town hall employee listed as a special projects. Well, that's what you guys just sent to me.
She does the accounting side. She can't do both. She can't apply for the money and do the accounting side.
So why is that her job description? Why is that her job?
Well, she takes care of the accounting. She's also listed as a counting clerk. She can't apply for it and take care of the funding.
Is she the person who would be like administering the, like that block grant? Is that who would handle that?
No, she, she strictly does accounting, like funding.
Just entries, data entries.
She can't apply for it and do that.
But I'm saying that we already awarded, been awarded that grant. So would she not be able to administer that? She would only do the paper piece of it.
Because she like writes the checks, so she wouldn't be able to handle both sides of it.
I got you.
I still think it's time to move on from that. I mean, you, we've got an employee sitting in here telling us that he's propping up his stuff with brooms. I don't think we need to be adding to our budget right now. We've, everybody's got a, you know, if he can sit back here and prop filters up with brooms, we can all pitch in and whatever's got to be done to, to make it happen without burdening the budget any further.
My suggestion would be, and I'm not going to be here so this is easy for me to suggest this, but I would suggest that you table this.
We had a suggestion in the new plan, right?
I would say you, you table, table this until your new council's elected and put this on their first agenda. That way you have everyone who's duly elected, the new council is making in January, and then they can make a plan going forward how they want to operate.
Amen.
So at this time, is there any action from council?
Would we lose anything on any grants or?
We've received a grant that we just don't have the capacity to manage right now that we would have to return.
Is that a ninety thousand dollar?
It's a small business revolving loan fund through USDA. It's, we applied for seventy-five. We got a hundred, but they require, you know, every quarterly reporting. We'd have to work with the business to make sure they're qualified, do the, you know, it's just a lot of paperwork.
What's it for, John?
Small business revolving loan fund. So any business in town that, you know, qualified and needed, couldn't get, you know, a loan from traditional resources or that, you know, a lower rate, we would be able to provide that.
I thought we decided the IDA was going to assist you facilitate that.
I mean, it's still, all of the reporting and all that would still fall back on your staff. You know, they could oversee it, same as you all could oversee it, but, you know, at the end, you would have to be, you know, somebody at the staff level, you know, doing the reports, making sure, working with the businesses, all of the legwork on it. And we're to the point where we just, I wouldn't feel comfortable trying to take it on.
It's ninety thousand. That was ninety thousand dollars.
It's a hundred and five with the town matching five thousand.
But between you, the IDA, and the county IDA, we can't make that work?
No.
Why? Is it, is, I mean, are you guys saying that it is just not important enough to you guys to, all right, well, I don't know if everybody can see that, but the answer was no, so.
Well, we don't have the staff to do it, is what I'm saying. We don't.
That's what he's saying. The report is going to be monthly from what I understand. It's not like it's a quarterly report. It's a monthly report, which would be.
A monthly report, I mean, someone, I'm sure, in that office, we worked with, when Sue Wade was there, you had four or five people. Now you've got close to ten. I mean, I don't understand who couldn't make a monthly report.
Before you return it, could you ask the county? Could you ask Tim Danielson to, if this is something that he would help you guys with, a report? And maybe he could help with, with our own town IDA? Because it, it's counterproductive to hire seventy thousand dollar benefits and everything to get a ninety thousand dollar revolving loan. Not that we want to give it back, but I feel like you should exhaust every option.
Let me ask you this. And how many hours do you think, let's say, per week that it's going to take for someone to administer that grant?
I wouldn't. It depends on, you know, the businesses that come in. You know, are there a whole bunch that come in and it's easy to process? They're eligible or, you know, it's kind of just hard to, you know.
But you've already made a determination you can't do it. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, I know that my capacity, I can't take on any other project and make this a higher priority than something else.
I understand that.
And that's, if we were to move forward, it would fall on, you know, me or, I don't know who.
My only point with this is, just like I told you guys a few months ago, I don't know what we got to do, but what, so while we're on this, what, where, what is the status of the, the block grant with the facade renovations?
We have the, we've received a contract agreement. We had some discussion. That was what I added later on, the dialogue and design.
Because if you can't do this one, you're not going to be able to do that one either. But we have to do that. Like, there's too much money at stake and too much good things for our town.
Lot of money right here, too. Ninety thousand dollars, ninety thousand.
That's what I'm saying. I, I don't want to see us return that. I just think we got to figure out, like, we definitely cannot return that grant. And we need to figure out how can we do this with either what we have or, that's why I'm saying, how many hours would it take? Is this a potential that you could hire a part-time person who would work, I don't know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from so-and-so to so-and-so? And these would be, if you're going to be involved with this grant, these are the days that you apply. This is the days that this person's here. You know what I'm saying? If that, is that an option? I'm, I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to make that happen. And then if you get, maybe that position grows, then if they're administering the block grant. And, you know, so if you did do that, you advertise a position that may start out as part-time, but may grow into a full-time position. Because that other, the block grant, could be potentially, what? A million dollars. So it's a lot more money involved. And I just don't want to see us not be able to do it because somebody doesn't have time to do it. I disagree with that.
Well, no one wants to see you lose ninety thousand dollars or any of that. So.
I mean, we've got businesses leaving Richlands every day because they can't operate. It's too expensive. The electricity's too high, everything. And yet, you want to add more personnel and more, which will have to raise taxes to cover that. And to me, that, I mean, Laura made a great point, seventy versus ninety and probably eighty-five percent of businesses fail, new ones. And you'll probably do this, I would think, on pop-up Richlands, very few of those will make it. And you know that and I know that.
I hope every one of them makes it.
I hope it does, too. But you watch, we'll be talking about this in two years and most of them will be gone. Because eighty-five percent, if you look at the percentage, businesses fail. And we were just talking a minute ago.
I think it's up to us to support them as well.
We support them, but you're running everybody off by raising taxes and adding more personnel.
I'm going to suggest this. I, I think we are all well-intentioned. Everybody here wants to save money and do the best we can and spend money and all that. I suggest that for this meeting, we move forward and put this on the agenda next time. And we may, Mike can come up with something better. I ask you, please do not return or send back or give any negative thoughts to the people we got this ninety thousand dollars from because we don't want that. It's hard enough to get a glance. And I thought that we should do that. And maybe council can think of a way to administer this that could be economical. I don't know, John, nor Heather, nor members of council, but I think that's the direction we need tonight. Because what I'm hearing is, is no, 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 no. And yes, 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 yes. And that doesn't work. So we must continue this at the next meeting. And I'm moving on.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one last thing? Please. John, would you do this? If you look at that and this whole part-time to full-time thing that we discussed, kind of give us an idea in October, okay, I believe this would take fifteen to twenty hours a week, twenty-five hours a week. And that way we know, and I think we can give you more of a direction, say, all right, maybe we can do this for that. Yeah.
And then maybe we could start at part-time, but when we get to that bigger revitalization project, we're going to have to.
I understand you need that. I, I completely understand.
What you're saying, someone with a designated job, that is your job period, that's all you do, nothing else. Okay. We could, we can look at that. I think that would be more amenable to council's what I'm thinking. All right, moving on. So please put that on next time and we will discuss it. All right, G, town building maintenance, town hall roof, police department roof, EMS department roof, and we can add on to that the teen center roof. Am I thinking right?
Yes.
So, who wants to open this up? Ms. Joe Daniel?
I can, and I'll keep it brief. We've received a couple of different bids for, you know, some of these. We started with town hall. We had, you know, some leaks when we got some heavy rain. We've got a couple of options of just doing some repair work or completely new roof, same with the PD. Then as we were working on those, the EMS, you mentioned, they had an issue. So we've got a couple tentative quotes on about what that would cost. But I think it'd be, you know, in our best interest to go ahead and put all four of those out for bid, get bids from whoever submits those before our next meeting so that we can consider, you know, those bids, potentially, you know, in closed session, so we can see, you know, is it something we want to move forward with, you know, at that time.
So you're suggesting to have a contractor look at these four?
We'll put it out for bid so, you know, we can get whoever's interested in.
I'm fine with that. Council, good.
Do you want to look at, to repair or replace?
I think we do the same options. Because originally, we didn't know what the damage was. Was it something small they could just, you know, patch and fix? But it seemed, from what we got from the initial quotes, it's a little bit more than what, you know, we thought, we hoped it was going to be. So I think it'd be, you know, you two options to repair, whatever it's patching or resurfacing, whatever it is, and then versus completely replacement.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll put that in a form of a motion that we go out for RFP on these four properties, town hall roof, the police department roof, the EMS department roof, and the teen center roof. And John, my suggestion would be in that motion that you put them where they can bid on one or all. Yeah. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Here's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jeff makes the second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call vote, please. Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, members of council and staff. Thank you. Okay, Christmas tree discussion. John?
So as you know, traditionally, we've had a Christmas tree over at the, with the stages now. Last year, or previous years, we were able to find somebody that would donate a ten to fifteen foot tree. Last year, we really struggled to find anybody that could donate it. And even if we, when we were able to find about a ten-foot tree, you know, the cost of shipping it here was a lot more than we were willing to pay. So I wanted to, you know, say, is this something that we want to continue to do? Last year, I think we were able to get a six-foot tree, but by the time they put it in there, you know, it's not that big tree that we would like to have downtown. Or do we want to look at going, the option of, you know, a plastic, you know, replica tree, you know, in that space or, because if we do, we need to go ahead and.
Did you look at any?
I have very strong opinions on it and I'd like to express it. Are you ready? Okay. No plastic. Out. It's very, it is, it was not sinful. It's, it doesn't work with the environment. And I don't like that. We don't need that. Number two, and it isn't real. I like real Christmas. Number two, we, as far as having people donate trees, it failed. And the reason, I know it failed. I was up at Vance Graphics this summer getting something for the section house. I can't remember what it was. And he said, Rod, come look at this. We've got a stand back there. We paid for about nine hundred dollars with all these empty plaques on it. We were going to name, write all these names on it. It's up there. It's ours, paid for. No, we don't want to do that anymore. We need to bring that thing down here and find another use for it. Maybe put your names on it. I don't know. I don't think that's successful. Number three, we need to buy a tree and be done with it. We need to buy a tree and forget this donating stuff. That's how you get what you want. We've got the money. God knows, thousands of dollars for this, that and the other. Buy a tree. Number four, we need a tree at the section house because it was a hit and a half. I stood there and called John O'Daniel up on Christmas Tree Hill. He had the primo view and he said, I can see you. And Jeff was over here at the town hall to light it up. Solved. Do I hear a motion on that? Buy a tree?
I'm afraid not to. I'm afraid not to.
By gosh.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The Christmas tree is solved.
And please make sure the section house has a tree as well.
Yes. I mean, there's no reason to go into that.
We've got a plastic one up front. We'll.
We're not going to spin wheels on that.
Don't you have a, Rod, don't you have an artificial knee now?
Yes.
That's good for the environment.
I just want.
Uh, I have an artificial knee and lots of other artificial parts, but I can't discuss them. I do have my dignity, you know, and a sense of humor that God gave me and I'm so grateful for it. All right, let's go. All right, we've solved the roofs. We solved the Christmas tree. Is Santa going to come down the chimney?
That's him.
All right. Dispatch hours of operation discussion. I don't know what you guys want to do with this. I think it's a discussion. I think it's a discussion that needs a lot of care, but we go into deep discussion here.
So essentially, these are the options that the sheriff submitted to us. Uh, we went and put kind of what the cost it would be. Um, you know, at this point, we will remain twenty-four hours until we get dispatch completely switched over. But at that point, we'd like some direction on what you council would like to see down there. Either remain twenty-four hours or maybe go on one of these options or some hybrid in between.
So are we at the point to make this decision?
I mean, yeah, you can. It just won't go into effect until dispatch.
Well, I think we need to talk with our new chief.
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, let's let him get his. I think we need to let him get his feet wet and see what he needs.
I think you need to have a chance at public comment on that, too.
I, I do agree with the public comment. My personal thought on it, I have. Me and nine-one-one, I mean, even before you got here, Mr. Daniel, this has been something I have researched very thoroughly. Um, and just to throw this out here, my two thoughts on this would, first of all, be option B. Option B, we have two full-time dispatchers right now. That's all we've got. If we go with option B, we lose no jobs in dispatch. Still open seven days a week until six P.M. And it will kind of transition a little smoother, I think, to get citizens used to it. Uh, if we don't go with that, then I would say one full-time clerk. Uh, I think in other areas, and again, this is something the new chief, uh, Chief Holt will give input on, but in other areas, the clerk, um, helps with the accreditation, keeps up with that. A lot of paperwork, a lot of process. So that is something we're gonna have to have his input on. But if we do go with option B, uh, we have no job loss there. And to me, that's, it helps with that. I don't want to see that and helps with a smoother transition.
So that's something, Laura, you're suggesting that's a possibility, and that's something, once the new chief is in place, he can study it and bring forth his recommendations as well?
Yeah, because ultimately, he's, he's gonna be the one, you know, in charge of all that. So I think his, uh, his opinion weighs more heavily than any of us.
I follow. Jeff, are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
He needs to get his feet wet?
Absolutely.
Okay, do we have, let's go forward.
He may want, he might even want something different.
All right, uh, council insurance discussion. Uh, council insurance discussion.
I brought this up.
Go ahead, Laura.
Mr. Daniel to put it on the agenda. Uh, I was very outspoken that we are in zero position to afford council having health insurance at this stage of the game. Um, I'll keep it brief so we can keep moving. I'll go ahead and make the motion that going forward, we don't have anyone on the insurance right now. So going forward, I don't believe that should be an option for council. If another council believes they are worthy of that, then let them sit here and say it to the citizens and do it. But for right now, I would like to make the motion to remove council insurance as an option.
Second, Mayor.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Laura makes the motion, Seth seconds the motion to remove council health insurance as an option. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
I would just say it's, as, as a citizen in this town, it's the most controversial thing that I ever saw any of you all vote on or do here. And it was disturbing. I, I believe that it was uncalled for. It was a, a huge cost to the citizens of this town. And no one in a part-time elected town council position deserves insurance. Me, anyone on this board or otherwise, should have even had the nerve to ask for that. So I think we're righting a wrong tonight and, uh, very, very glad we have an opportunity to do that.
The only thing, the only thing that I would like to say, would there be anybody that? And I can't speak for any, any of the candidates that are running or looking to run in the council in the upcoming election. Uh, would it, would, would that be a reason that they may be running?
If it is, they're doing it for the wrong reasons.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying it is right or wrong.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, is that something that we have to consider? That they may have ran based on that platform? I mean, I, we don't know.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, sh- sh- should we wait? Should, should, should you wait till January to do it when you have your council?
If we do it.
What she's saying is this, this motion, actually, we revoke it now. And if they want to do it, then they ha, they get elected, then they can make that motion if they so determine that's their right.
Well, we can sit here and make motions, you know, what I'm saying.
Because we have to, you have to vote on this every year when we renew our insurance.
Yeah.
So essentially, you know, your motion would just carry to wait to renew it anyways.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Okay, we got a motionless vote on it.
But what I'm saying is, is no one here has it right now. So we're revoking the ability of someone to come on, because they're gonna be in a fiscal year. When they come on in January, they would have five years. They could take insurance, correct? If you left everything the same, someone's elected, they come on in January, they could take the insurance. By doing this, they cannot. And if they want it, then they'll have to vote it in at the next fiscal year.
Right, but what I'm saying, what if they signed up?
Too bad, too sad.
Huh?
Too bad, too sad.
Well, that's not for us to say.
Oh, it is for us to say.
Well, no, it's for them to say if they get elected. Hey, that's what I'm saying.
When we, when that public hearing.
You see what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying, but when we have that public hearing.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, what, what if they ran based on it?
Well, I mean, that's the wrong reason to run.
Public hearing, there was not one citizen that stood up there that said, this is a great idea, you guys. I mean, everybody.
I just don't want to put that onto a, onto a potential person who's running.
I mean, I, obviously, I'm running in this council election. I know Mr. Wood is, if Rick were to look at me right now and say he's running for that insurance, I would tell him to step aside and let somebody else come up who's gonna do it for the citizens.
Yeah, I'm, I wouldn't vote for anyone, I would say.
We have enough discussion. I think we've all aired our differences and, uh, agreements. So, um, I would ask for, uh, a vote. Did you get the motion in a second? Laura made the motion, Seth seconded. Uh, yes, please.
Yes.
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 Uh, it carries unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, moving along. Uh, public safety committee discussion. Okay, go ahead. What's this, John?
Laura asked for that.
That was also me.
Okay.
Uh, with everything happening, we just talked about the, um, situation with the dispatch hours and everything. We're going through some changes, and there's something in here that, um, Matt Wieden had brought up as well. I think that one of us is not as great as all of us. So to pull a committee together, the town used to have one. I believe it was the, um, police chief, the, the chiefs of the fire rescue.
Uh, Larry Whirl, and I served on it for a while. It was the town manager, uh, the various, uh, police chief, fire chief, EMS. And, uh, at that time, there were two members of council on it. Larry Whirl and myself.
If we approve this, I would love to sit on this committee. Public safety has been a huge, um, kind of my wheelhouse. And there's something, I'm not sure if we're gonna go into closed session about it, but there have been some situations happening that the town of Richlands is, we're dropping the ball on. When it comes to public safety, these things need to be addressed. They need to be rectified. And for the good of the town and the citizens, I would make a motion.
You making a motion?
I will. I'll make the motion that we form a public safety committee.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second for a public safety committee. Any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one thing I want to say. I completely agree with this. I think it's an open platform for your EMS captain, your, your fire captain, your police chief, everybody to be on the same page and to have a place, a place where they can communicate what they need in their department. And, you know, before any criticism begins, I just want to say it's not, this is not a micromanagement of anyone. But I would hope that, um, I would hope our chiefs would be excited about the opportunity, be able to share what's going on. You know, and I, and I want to say I appreciate, you know, these guys. And, and when Matt comes in here to present something like he did last time, he always has his stuff together. He gives you a, a sheet of what's going on, what do you need, you know what I'm saying? That, and that's the kind of platform where they ha, open up that communication, and they can talk to the council better. Everyone's on the same page with what they need. The town manager knows then, you know, you, you've got a place to kind of air out what you need. I think it's an effective solution, so I, I support it.
How do they, now, now, how, how's it work, or do they report each month?
Jeff, I'll tell you how it worked previously. It doesn't mean it has to work the same way. The public safety committee met, uh, it was members, uh, members, member of the council, two members at that time, two members of the council. Um, all those, uh, departments, which would be chief of police, fire, and EMS, and the town manager. And we met in the conference room, and they went over lots of things, uh, about budgets and safety, uh, individual cases, things that could get sensitive in the open, uh, that could be.
Labor reporter.
And then we would have a report, uh, to the council, a public safety committee report, and it was all council and staff. If that's what council wants.
And it kept us from getting blindsided by anything. You always know on council what's going on in the EMS.
What happened? I mean, why don't we still have?
And there was a stand, well, uh, there was a change in leadership, and it was done away with.
Okay.
But I think it's effective, and you guys have a lot of.
It's not a standing committee, it's ad hoc.
Okay, you got a lot of vehicle needs that are coming up, and this is a good place to plan for that kind of stuff as well.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 The motion carries unanimously. I will go ahead and appoint this committee. Uh, and obviously, it will be John and the town, the town manager, the chief of police. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, fire and EMS chiefs. And Laura, you want to serve on it?
Yes, sir.
And I will serve on it. Is that acceptable to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? We don't need too many, because we can, we'll break the law. Can't do it. Okay. All right, I would suggest, um, that, John, maybe Lauren and I can get with you, and we'll establish a routine meeting time. I know the first Tuesday and the second Tu, first Tuesday's busy with IDA and planning. Second Tuesday is council, maybe the third Tuesday. I'll ask you to look and be in contact with us tomorrow. Is that okay? And touch base with the chiefs, so you can find out what is best for them, too. We'll find an amicable meeting time. Or amicable.
Maybe some generic guidelines, so that maybe future councils or anything would know, you know.
What to do.
So this doesn't happen again. I mean, I know we've run in that with rec commission for years, you know. Nobody knows really, you know.
It's very difficult.
Yeah, but I mean, if we had something to go by, and then we say, hey, we need two council members of this, or somebody comes off, and then we can point them out.
Well, all I can share with you, uh, is my experience. Larry was the chairman, I was the secretary, and every time the minutes were due, I would say, Larry, go over these, make sure they're right. And he would correct anything that I made a mistake on, and I don't write well, so I have to have a laptop.
Will there be citizen input? I mean, will citizens be members of it?
We had people come to the, but it's primarily, uh, an in-house thing to exchange. Uh, there were, uh, strong opinions between Tim and William. And others, because we're all people wanting different things.
Thanks, that's what it is.
I mean, they, they didn't agree on everything.
It's part of.
His life.
Yeah.
All right, so, John, if you'll check with the chiefs and see, maybe tomorrow, we'll give you a little slack, maybe tomorrow, by the end of the week. Is that acceptable?
I'll, I'll work on that.
Thank you, John. And I would suggest an evening meeting. Six o'clock.
I was gonna, I was gonna say early, okay.
Uh, that's my suggestion. I don't rule the joint.
I'll, 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 I see what, what we can work.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, now, library project funding, and we have with us Lauren Brown, who is representing. Uh, so Lauren, let me get your role straight. Are you, um, a legal attorney, obviously, representing the interest of the library fi, board? What is it?
Yes, um.
Come on up, talk with us. I don't, I just want to make sure we're not in a contentious state here.
It is absolutely not.
Oh, good, good, good.
No, no.
Thank you.
And I think, I can't really, I was, I was retained to, um, to help the library in securing the funding, which was already approved. But also just to, um, kind of mediate any disagreements, which I think has already effectively happened. Um, there's no contentious.
Well, that's one to know, when an attorney comes to us, you know, I always shudder just a little bit. But it's you, and I don't shudder so much, because I know you and like you. All right, but do you mind to explain it?
Um, well, the funding was approved for the exterior of the library to be renovated, which I think we can all agree is in desperate need of repair. And, um, a hundred and fifty-four thousand was approved. So they have put out the request for bids. And in that request for bids, there are three progress payments that are to be made. So when the contractor invoices the library, the library can then submit the invoice to the town. And, um, three payments of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents adds up to a hundred and fifty-four, um, which was approved by the town in December of twenty-twenty-one. So that's what this memorandum of understanding was.
So we just need a motion to accept this memorandum of understanding?
Essentially, I didn't feel comfortable writing a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar check with no kind of oversight. So this was kind of how both grants go, so I thought it was a, you know, a valid kind of process to take, so that we make sure that the work's getting done as we're expending the money.
Who did the RFP?
That was all.
May I ask questions? I think I'm on this. Let me help, please. Uh, Lauren, you're trying to get a job done, and you can't get it done without this money.
Right.
So if this money sits here, you can't do certain things, so it's a drawdown.
It is.
All right, how much do you need now? A hundred fifty-four thousand or thirty-three?
Fifty-one-three. Well, um, the, the total that was approved was the hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Right, but what I'm asking, what do you need right now for the first drawdown?
Well, the first drawdown would, would be submitted for, um.
They're gonna submit the invoice.
Yeah, for, for reimbursement, once the project has already taken place. So the request for bids has just been submitted. So we, we, um, the library hasn't even picked a contractor yet. So whenever the first, there's gonna be three progress payments during the phase one.
Yes.
Exterior renovation. So, um, I'm sorry, I can't give you a timeframe as to when it would be. But we do know that there will be three invoices, um, each the total, I, I'm not sure, but.
That's okay.
Um, but for a, a refund to the library board of at least fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, three times.
Would it be possible? Would it be possible that, uh, they present this invoice that they need to pay to the town, and we will pay, uh, up to three of them? Uh, I'm asking, John?
I don't even think you need to do that. I think it's already approved. I think she is just telling you what's gonna happen.
And she's, they just wanted the MOU, so we're all on the same page of house.
That's what we're gonna prove is the MOU. So we make a motion that we approve the MOU between Town of Richlands and Tazza County Public Library Board of Trustees.
Yes, we're good.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Lauren Brown.
Thank you. May I get the signatures now so that I can take it back to the chairman?
I would ask that you come tomorrow for that. It might be a little pushy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Which is just, um.
Use my words. You can tell them what Brad Curry said.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's just the memorandum of understanding that you already have in front of you and your signature and.
Well, do you want to sign it right now?
The main.
Here, I've got it.
Well, I've got a copy of that whole.
Should we explain where that money came from?
It's a grant, right?
No.
ARP money.
ARP money.
Yeah. What is today, the thirteenth?
Yes. Yes.
I feel like I need to ask him to approach Matt Bridge.
Objection.
Hand that to John. Okay.
Do we own that building as well, Ron?
The library building?
Right. Or does the la- does county own the building or town owns the building?
County.
The town, there's at least.
I just.
Yeah, and that's, that's another complicated defactoring. Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Did you get it signed?
Yes, I, I just need the two.
We don't. Well, how are we paying for it? Sorry, I'm just trying to get caught up.
We, we have two originals. You'll get it on the side and just return it.
I know that, but are we referring to, we don't own?
He's asking, and I was gonna ask the same thing. He's, can somebody explain it? Cause I don't have an understanding.
Who owns the library?
We, we own the library and we allow them to use it. The town, essentially it was willed to the town as long as it continues to be a library.
I got you.
So it's very complicated in ownership and then maintaining it. And so there's some other issues we're working through.
We're good. Thank you. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, next, street paving discussion. And we have here a handwritten copy of the streets that need to be paved. I have it somewhere nearby. Here we go.
Yeah, I asked staff to kind of give me a tentative list of what they had. Um, it's kind of ranked in order of worst, uh, you know, still needs improvement. But there's no, you know, true like scoring or evaluation on each of these. The green stars indicate roads that if we were to repave them, we will also need to replace water and sewer line under those because it doesn't make sense to repave a road. And then, you know, have a water sewer line continue to break and have to continue to dig it up and re, you know, pave. But this was kind of a list I wanted to give you also. You can start looking at it. Paving is something that we, we discuss every year during the budget. So that we haven't budgeted, you know, any money for since I've been here, but I wanted to give you all an update. And you allow you to ask any questions if you want to review this and then we can discuss it later. Um, up to you all, kind of what discussion you want to have.
I, I had a couple of questions. So when we were at the county, we did paving every year. And we always got matching funds from VDOT to do paving. We put up half a million, VDOT put up half a million. We got a million dollars worth of paving done. Why are we not doing that here?
Is that, Heather, is that the one they don't do anymore?
What?
The, the matching on the paving? Cause we, we get some money from VDOT for VDOT roads, but there used to be something where they, you know, ma- there was a matching fund.
Was a matching fund that we always did.
I think they've gotten rid of that in the last two or three years, you know, the additional.
I think we get around, we get around a million dollars a year to upkeep their roads.
Can I make a suggestion?
It's not like what you were talking about before, to what they'd say is correct.
We get about a million dollars a year? And we've done no paving?
Well, it's not, no, it's not paving. It's not like a paving grant. It's just upkeep and general maintenance, like any kind of like work, like not, I mean.
What the heck are we doing with a million dollars?
Let's just sit there. It could just be like you're snowing and stuff like that, like, you know, stuff like that, like that would, you could.
Hold up.
You have a million dollars of VDOT money right now? Is that what you just spent?
That's what is a lot.
Why are we not paving these roads?
Cause we use the money.
We're using the money elsewhere. Where are we using the money?
It is for general maintenance of those.
But not paving?
No, you can use it for paving. You can do, use it for pa- uh, patching. You can do.
Painting.
Painting. Uh, you can do, uh, like weed cutting. You can do.
Round the road.
Snow removal. It's not just the paving. It's not just.
How much have we spent of it this year?
I have to do it.
Okay.
We just done the painting on the roads, like.
I saw that, that clatter buck thing. I guess that came out of that. But why don't we, like, you've got a list now. Why don't we budget that money and say, we're going to do, like, this is our whole list. Why can't we take that money, budget it? We'll do this many this year. We'll do this many next year. And we begin, I don't think you can do all of it. Obviously, there's not money to do it all one year. And you have to have some of the funds to do other things. I understand that. But we should be setting aside and saying forty percent of this, or thirty, or fifty, or whatever that number is, we're gonna use that for paving. And we're gonna go down this schedule that staff has prepared and we're gonna pave these roads.
That's the way it was done.
That's the way it was done.
Why, why are we not doing it? Like, I'm sorry, but.
Now we subsidize.
Just spit it out. What aren't y'all telling me right now?
Well, no, I think a part of it, part of the situation involved, and I, from what I understand, is that now we subsidize salaries with some of that money. So we can't get caught back up.
Oh, my God.
Is that what we're doing? Are we subsidizing salaries?
Well, I mean, you can look at.
It's, it's really complicated.
It's complicated.
That is not complicated. Is that what we're doing?
It's just tough to catch up. It'll be tough to catch up. We could use some ARPA money to catch up. That's what my suggestion was.
Go ahead, Heather.
Look, if you're looking at the total amount of money that we have, it's like.
But it's in the hole for why reason?
No, like it's as a whole, like it's a, as a whole amount. Like that money is included in it.
So like we'll budget, you know, six hundred thousand of it to do some of the stuff. And then sometimes we're not able to do the six hundred thousand, but it was in our budget.
To do six hundred.
So then, you know, if we don't do the six hundred thousand, whatever's left over, we still owe them. But essentially it was budgeted, you know, so it just.
Can't get caught up.
Essentially, it's the last budget issue that we're.
That's the, no, we're never doing that. That's never gonna happen again. Okay? We're gonna budget every bit of this money. We're gonna use every bit of this money that they give us to fix the freaking roads. That's, that's what it's for. That, this is simple.
I said, make a fund, just put it in there.
That's right. Put it aside, budget this. You know, you're gonna spend X amount. We take our bids in the spring. Paving's done by, you know, July, August, whenever, you, or you can take your bids, start your bids in March, April. Paving then is on a schedule and it will be done. Once you know how much you're coming in from your bids and what you do is you take all your bids. So you get, you bid all this out and then you just tier it down and you say, we're gonna do this much because this is how much money we've allotted for. The rest of it, you save for the maintenance or whatever needs to be done. But I mean, this is, this is not hard.
But then we've got, well, we've got to find money to pay everybody with. That's what he's saying. We'll never get caught back up.
Um, how do you, how are you using VDOT money to pay people? I, I don't even understand how you do that. How's that legal?
Go ahead, Rick.
We keep getting later and later. We need a workshop to straighten this out.
Look, we're here. I mean, I'd just like to get through this. This is important.
That's something that we were, you know, having to work through when we start the budget process for, you know, it was like of the list of items that I had that I wanted to address with our financials. This was the last one that we had and we figured a way to fix it and put it away and start, you know, moving beyond it.
I suggested like just use the ARPA money to catch back up.
So how much would that be? Because like when I, when I went back through, I've read the minutes of these meetings for the past ten years. And there was one point, and I'll say Doug said it, oh, and I won't say who he said it to, cause that person's not here anymore. But Doug flat out said, we owe VDOT a million dollars. Is that true? Do we owe VDOT because this money was used?
Yeah. I mean, we owe them work. Yeah, that's.
We owe them work. I mean, I, we don't owe.
Oh, okay. I get, I get what you're saying. I get it now. We've already committed the work. We didn't do the work. We used the money elsewhere in the general. I'm with you now.
See how it works?
The million dollars I was talking about was used elsewhere other than the roads.
And it wasn't eligible to be considered towards the work, but the money was already spent. There's nothing you can do about it.
And the statement was made to me, we have to put that money back.
Well, what, what Jeff's saying is probably the only solution that's gonna work. Can you come back in October with a number for us or a generalized number?
So I guess, you know, if we use the ARPA money, that would just fix the issue. It won't fix the reoccurring. So like, we need to fix the root issue.
You see what I'm saying? The root issue.
When we go into next year's budget.
The salaries.
So how are we paying them before? Years before we got the VDOT money, how are we paying the salaries?
From what I understand, in, in the past, we had more staff, so we would get one point two million dollars worth of work on VDOT roads. So it was never an issue. But as we, you know, didn't free hire employees for cost savings, then we went from the eighth employees to the four. So now we weren't doing as much VDOT work and we started.
I was gonna invite VDOT to the next meeting. I think it's probably a bad idea at this point. But I'm, I mean, guys, I'm sorry.
Well, I've been in touch with them recently and maybe I shouldn't be in touch.
This is, this is terrible. And I mean.
This is not something that's new though.
I know, I know it's not new. I'm just saying this is an inherited problem, but I didn't know.
Take. A lot of time and, you know, it's easy to sit there and say, we need to fix X, Y, Z, but like, you're, you're not really getting to the root of the problem of like, how are you gonna replace that? How, you know, are we gonna replace equipment? How is that money gonna be spent? Because there's only certain things that the VDOT money can be spent.
Okay. We can't solve this tonight. But by the next meeting, if you could give us a list of how the money can be spent, I'm gonna try to help y'all with this before I leave. Give me a list of how the money can be spent and kind of a, a generalized idea of where, what we're doing.
See, that's the thing. Like, that, that's what.
Jeff?
I've been asking.
I would suggest this.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty passionate about this too, Seth.
Would you and Seth like to work with John on this and come up to council? Would you like that, John, or would you rather do it yourself?
I'm not gonna turn down extra help.
He knows.
All right, well.
This is a very confusing topic.
I've talked with him about it for a year now.
Okay, I'm going to appoint by the authority vested in me.
Straight from.
Seth and Jeff meet with John in the town hall.
Before October.
Before our October meeting and come up with a plan. Thank you, gentlemen. You've been appointed.
Morning meeting.
Uh, so that is one of the last sacrifices you can possibly do.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go.
Uh, the next.
Fluoride update.
The next item, we are very close to being able to, we've got a couple of things we gotta check off, uh, to be able to start pumping fluoride into the water. This was something that started way before I got here. With all the turnover, I wanted to make sure everybody's on board to continue to move forward with that before we call the health department in here to get the inspections and start sending out letters to the citizens. And, you know, you know, either if you do move forward, so you're aware of, you know, why you're getting these phone calls or, you know, if you wanna change course, we need your direction at this point. Um, before we continue to make those next few steps. But I wanted to, you know, just bring you all up to speed on where we were and then see if it's something you want us to continue to move forward with at this point. Since it's been about a year and a half, two years since the original decision was made, based on what I've been told.
More.
All right.
Lots more.
I'm gonna tell you, I, you know, my children never had fluoride because I just assumed we were in this century and had fluoride in our water here. So for me, I think that should be a no-brainer.
There's a lot of pros and cons that you, with the studies on fluoride too, you know? So maybe we should put it off and maybe do some studies to make sure it's warranted. Everything you eat now, or if you brush your teeth, you've got fluoride. They tell you not to swallow it because you'll get too much fluoride. Uh, with the problems we're having with, uh, personnel, if everybody remembers about two years ago, our water turned green. Remember? Does people remember that? The old East Side?
Was it St. Patrick's Day?
No. No, there was, there was a mistake made and a chemical was put in the water and it turned the whole water system green. Okay? Okay, what I'm saying, we should go slow on this because if you make a mistake with fluoride, you'll poison people. It's a poison. If one town in North Carolina did it, they couldn't use their water for thirty days. They made a mistake on fluoride. So you, I advise we go very slow. We make sure it's planned well with the personnel, if we even carry.
Well, I just say that we're, we're getting ready to make these repairs to the system. I mean, once that's done, then I think you guys bring that back and you have a conversation about it.
I agree.
But I think more importantly than putting the fluoride in the water is making sure that the system's functioning to begin with. We gotta get this other piece done first.
I agree.
I just want your direction, you.
Why don't we put it on hold like you say until we get the system up?
Yeah, I mean, get your, get your repairs done and then bring it back up at that point.
I just have nightmares with.
With the valves that we got, the problems. I'm a little bit afraid to do it anyway.
Yeah, I think we got bigger problems right now with fluoride.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
So put it on hold.
Okay. Uh, then we added, um. What is it, John?
It was a utility refund. This is something that Laura asked about. This was, we talked about this probably five-ish months ago. The gentleman that had the demand meter, he came and asked it to be switched to a regular meter for his electric use. Uh, and Laura's, you know, asked to discuss this further with council, uh, based on, he did pay some demand. He charges based on his use at that time. I mean, I'll turn it over.
Did we give him, did we turn him back to, fix him with a regular meter?
We put him on a regular, um, meter.
And what's he wanting? The difference?
Uh, I guess he spoke to Laura. He hadn't spoken to me.
Yes, he's just asking for what's owed to him, the difference, so.
From the time of?
I, I'm not sure if it was one bill or two. So do you have that information?
Yeah, I've got three bills. So when he hit the demand peak, he was charged three demand, uh, charges of one twelve fifty.
Total?
No, uh, times three.
And then we, I think we, we, we agreed to do the meter, but right at the meeting.
The council didn't.
Was that after he'd already had those three charges, right?
It was, I think he.
And then he just wanted the, the meter off, I guess. That's from what I understand, right?
Is there any other, any other residential household that has a demand meter?
It really wasn't a household. It was, it was his building.
It's kind of like a garage by itself in their residential.
No attachment.
It's not attached to his house?
No.
No. It's just a separate building. It doesn't have any water.
Ah.
It's got electricity.
And it had cents. He didn't even use it. He just used it for storage.
John, are you looking for approval from council to give you this mandate?
I mean, like, I, you know, I, when y'all made the decision to switch into residential, you know, I expressed that I disagreed. You know, I think he made the peak. He pulled the electricity on our system, put the demand on there. Um, I think, you know, he should have, you know, to pay for some of it. Um, he hasn't proved that he fixed, you know, whatever it is that caused, you know, the demand.
What caused the demand was that he had a heat pump installed. So while that work was going on, cause I was here in the meeting when, when he came and spoke. And, um, and then while the temperature was adjusting or, or whatever, it was.
It takes three months.
What's fair to him and what's fair to the town?
Well, when he asked for it, right? I mean, we, we took it off, right?
Yeah, you switched it to a residential, a regular meter.
Yeah, it's back on.
So he's back on the regular.
But if it was never a business in the first place, it never had any business to be in it, having a demand meter.
And there was, there's no town regulation saying, no, if I remember correctly, so it was like just at your guys' discretion.
Yeah, cause when you look at that building, it's not residential. You know, to me, I think it looks more commercial. It's an aluminum shell building, had some vehicles parked outside, something that looked, been worked on.
Is it attached to his primary residence?
He lives in Hinn Valley. There's a, you know, mobile home on another parcel beside it, but it's, you know, a garage on its own parcel.
And it is zoned residential. So to me.
I just, I like to say, just, I just let the manager, I just let the manager take care of it.
To me, going forward, if those are decisions, if, if you wanna take something that's zoned residential and put a demand meter on it, we need to have a written down policy in place for that.
I guess it's, it would be so hard to write a policy that, cause we have so many weird buildings and things that people have built that are kind of residential, kind of commercial. You know, like there's so many hodgepodge properties.
I think that's, that's easy. If they have to have a business license, then you can put a demand meter on them. If they don't have to have a business license, you should not be allowed to put a demand meter on them.
That's too simple.
I mean, that seems simple to me.
But I mean, he could be like, you know, as a hobby out there welding.
So what is?
He's pulling the demand, it's.
It's, it hit, the reason it got put on there is he went and hit the.
The demand.
The demand mark. That's why it got put on there. Cause he went over the com- the residential power. That's why. Not like, and then if you go by, like, you know, you're not going by and they're like, oh, well, it's weird. He's got a garage. He's maybe working like, no, it's not attached to his house. It's all separate, completely in a field by itself.
We live in an area where you've got a lot of car hobbyists and it, it, no, his residence is in Hinn Valley. But I'm, I think this is gonna set a very dangerous precedent that if you can put this residentially zoned building on a demand meter, it can happen to anybody. And that's why I think, I know it's difficult, um, you know, with the policy. And I know it's hard, but there's gotta be a policy. And until that policy is in place, I'll make a motion that since we, you, you took him off, that made, um, the demand meter, put him on residential. You're talking three hundred and thirty-two, thirty-six dollars, whatever that is. I make the motion that we refund him.
It's more than that.
He said a hundred and twelve fifty times three.
That was his demand.
So whatever.
Three, three, seven, fifty.
Whatever that amount would have been if he were on a residential in those three months, I make that motion that you're gonna refund him in that capacity.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor in a second.
The, the only thing I will clarify is if we could, we would put a demand meter on every property in town.
That's exactly why we don't need a power system.
Well, but, but.
You know what I'm saying? I get what you're saying, but.
So then, well, cause then everybody pays for their fair share. If you have somebody that is pulling a lot more, then we know so we can build them accordingly.
See, I'm thankful, like, if, if I, when I start running my woodworking equipment in my barn that has a separate power meter, that does not have the demand meter from AP, I'm on AP, not town. But I'm not gonna be paying demand. But if I was in the town, you'd wanna come light me up cause it's on my house.
I have a question. Did you say what? Do you mind if we pick what you said?
If demand meters were the same cost as a regular meter, we would probably put demand meters on everything, just, but there's such a huge cost difference.
I make a motion that John can never put demand meters on anyone that's residential.
Well, we've got a motion.
I know, I'm just being.
Uh, so we got a motion and a second. On the floor, are you clear with the money, John? All right, any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you, council.
But I, I, no, not being facetious, but I think the bigger discussion is, I think you should really look into a policy of, I don't think you should put demand meters on any residential structure. And I understand what you're saying is everybody should pay their fair share, but we're already in a situation where the people in Hinn Valley are, and on AP are definitely paying less.
It still goes back to you, how do you define residential? Cause when I look at that property, nobody lives there. So there's not a resident. So how's it, you, so it's, it gets into that, how do you draw that line?
But then maybe the problem with that was he shouldn't have been allowed to build that. That should have been stopped, you know, if he was.
I think he bought it years. He didn't build it.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, then you're.
Somebody may have been running a garage. It may have been a garage before that.
Yeah, but it's in a residential zone.
If anybody wants to move on, let me know.
Okay. Could I say one thing? Uh, and then I'll shut up too. Uh, I wanna go back.
Till the next motion?
I wanna go back to the minutes and that million dollars, just to help you guys on the committee. And Rod, we'll remember this. We were in a town meeting and Rod knows very well about it, that a town official comes. We were in a town meeting, and Rod knows very well about it, that a town official comes in and says, I spent that million dollars on something we shouldn't have spent it on, and we gotta replace that. And you were in that meeting. And other words, that money was spent where it shouldn't have been spent, the million dollars, and that's what we have to, you guys, look and replace.
So it's a perpetual hole that was created by somebody else, named him.
By a town official that used money, and it was highly, it was, should have been, it's highly, could have been illegal, okay? If I must say, and you were in that meeting. Well, I'm not denying I was. Yeah, right, right. You were, okay, you, okay, that's where the problem started four years ago. And I brought that in minutes several times, as you will verify, Laura.
Is it too late to turn that over to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office? I mean, if this money was spent inappropriately, then you all should, you all have an obligation. If we're in this room and we see John or anyone else spend money in a way that's inappropriate, that is taxpayer-funded dollars, then we have an obligation to turn it over to Commonwealth Attorney. So my question is, is that, is there statute of limitations on someone misappropriating public funds? Probably not. So if there's not, you all should turn this over to the Commonwealth Attorney and let them investigate it.
That's actually part of my council report tonight, going into that.
Well, we can go with the council report, shall we? Let's move on.
Oh, no, he, he's got a P, item P.
Um, did we vote on the last thing? We did, didn't we? Okay, good deal. Uh, we have, is it dialogue and something contract?
Essentially, we've received a contract agreement back from the company to do the initial architectural part of the downtime revitalization project. Uh, the attorneys have reviewed it, the main issue they had with it, it doesn't state that it's capped at the fifty thousand, which is what the grant amount was for. So, you know, we wanted, we're gonna have to go back to them and renegotiate, you know, that, but, you know, is council wanting to keep it capped at that fifty thousand? 'Cause they kinda left it a little bit open-ended and we don't, you know, we had some concerns on you leaving it open-ended. Uh, but we wanted to kind of give council an update on that and see what direction you all want us to go. Do you want us to go back to them and say, no, it needs to be capped at fifty thousand, or it needs to be capped at, you know, whatever it's gonna be to get it completed? Or do we wanna leave it more open-ended, up to a certain amount? Just, it's kind of a, you know, difficult question to answer, but.
Did we set an amount in the beginning?
Originally, it was just the, the total amount of the grant, we didn't, you know, the fifty thousand we received.
This is for the?
It's kind of the architecture to get the, the plan and everything in place, then we can apply for the million dollar downtown revitalization, for the facades and the street, streetscapes and the street lighting, or, you know, whatever, you know, the money is chosen to be used for.
What does this go through, the ADA or what are you?
Yeah, it's just.
Have they exceeded it, or do we, we don't have a bid, we, how do we know?
No, they've come back with a contract agreement that they, you know, wanted to get in place before they, you started the work, but the contract doesn't, you know, specify, okay, it's capped at fifty thousand.
I think that's probably a good idea.
And that's what, you know, we felt that it probably needed to be, but wanted to make sure the council wasn't willing to, you know, add a little bit more to it, or whatever we needed to do.
Yeah, I mean, then let them change, if they, if they need, if there's a need, they say, well, we would need an extra ten thousand to do X, that's something else. But you can't, I don't think you give them an open-ended.
All right, so you got.
Yeah.
You get with that, John?
Yep, that's all in here.
Cap works, okay, thank you, uh, staff members of council. Okay, um, so we are, we don't need to return to open session certification? Oh, uh, we need to go, I think you wanna go in closed session.
Yeah, let's just.
Another night?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, Prime Minister, ten, town manager report, emergency phone update, and miscellaneous.
So I got a lot of different things, I'm gonna run through them pretty quickly, if you have any questions, just stop me. Emergency phone update, uh, we reached out to the individual sheriff said that was working on those for the community college. They gave us the contact information, but didn't have any kind of quotes on that, so that's something we wanna move forward with, you know, in the future. Uh, we'll just need to have any further discussion on what exactly we want those to look like, is it standalone, is it on the building? You know, so we can, you actually get a quote on that, it's kinda hard to get a quote, there's so many different options out there. Uh, next item is Lake Park restroom, I don't know if some of you are aware of, but the bathroom was vandalized again. Um, recently, they basically smashed up the whole sink into, you know, a ton of different pieces. So they will be, you know, working to repair that, but it will likely be closed for the rest of the season, uh, and they'll winterize it for winter, and then it'll be open next summer. Um, Cornelia Cox came and spoke at the last council meeting, uh, went and reviewed, uh, that. There was a survey line that were, versus what she thought the property line was, there was some disagreement on that. Uh, and at this time, I didn't feel like it was something that we need to get involved with, that's something that you want legal counsel to look into further. You know, we can have them do that, but based on where the road was, I didn't feel like it was something that we needed to start doing work to maintain somebody's personal property. Um, and, you know, I feel for her, I feel for the situation she's in, but I just didn't feel like it was something that we needed to get involved with at this time. Uh, junk vehicles, some dilapidated homes, things of that were mentioned at the last meeting. Uh, we currently don't have a co-enforcement officer, hopefully when we get a new police chief in, he will be able to hire somebody to help you start back with that. Uh, but ultimately, a lot of those come down to the funding. You know, we wanna start tearing down houses, we need to start, you budgeting money to help pay for those demolitions. You know, we'll put the lien on the property, but a lot of times, you're not ever gonna get the money back, but it, at the end, you are cleaning up the town. Uh, so that's something I'm sure we will discuss further. Uh, East Second Street, I've looked at that one, um, there's a lot of issues that, you know, come up, from the people parking on it, to the street paving, to the wall, um, that I think that, you know, if it is something we wanna address, and we're looking at a lot of money, and then a very difficult time, because just the, the proximity of the houses and the way it's laid out, and, you know, trying to determine, you know, what's our responsibility versus what's the property owners', and you're working with them to, you know, potentially address some of those issues. Um, if it's something we do wanna pursue, I think it's something we're definitely have to get some legal counsel on. You where some of those issues fall on responsibility, and then finding a way to, you know, move forward with, you know, addressing those. Uh, Cliff Street, for, uh, it is a private road from Burnett, uh, from Burnett to Prater Drive is maintained by the town. As you start to go up the hill, that is a private road, at one time it was paved, that's the worst, you know, shape, uh, part of it, it's in the worst shape. Uh, but that is a private road.
The part that's in the worst shape is the private road?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I had the guys check on the trash truck breaks, um, from what I've been told, this is kind of just an unfortunate, you know, side effect of, you know, a big piece of equipment moving up and down the hills. Um, but they have looked at those and checked on those. Um, Laura asked about the website, um, Ashley was working on that when she was here, and then when she left, it kind of got dropped. And the grant that the county had expired, but, uh, AJ sent the link, if that's something we want to pursue, you know, at a later time to get that updated. The solar panel, um, update on that, we received a draft ordinance, uh, from GDS on how we could safely, you know, implement the rules and regulations on that. Um, I've had, I have some staff and some people that work in electricity, um, review that, see if there's any issues or things that stand out to them that we need to make sure we're aware of. Uh, I def, I also mentioned the planning commission, that we need to start looking at zoning. We don't wanna put an ordinance in place that allows solar panels, but then somebody can put them anywhere on their property and we start having zoning issues. So we wanna go ahead, when we adopt that, we go ahead and adopt the zoning requirements as well, so then everybody's on the same page of what's expected of them. Uh, pop-up round two started last week, so we're excited to hopefully get a couple of new businesses out of that. Um, Laura mentioned the street lighting on Mason Street, um, our guys can put a street light out there, it's gonna be about a two hundred dollar cost. Um, but if there's nobody that objects to that, we're gonna go ahead and put it out there. I don't know what the annual cost would be, but it's an LED light, so I wouldn't assume, you know, uses a whole lot of electricity, but I did wanna make you aware of, there will be a two hundred dollar charge, um, for the cost of that light. Um, so if nobody objects, we'll move forward with that. Everybody's good. So the last two things, Halloween, this year it falls on a Monday. You know, at our next meeting, we need, we'll need to discuss, you know, are we gonna look at, you know, different times, or, you know, ask, you know, residents to observe it on Saturday or Sunday? I plan on talking to the new chief, as well as the interim, to see, you know, what they recommend, um, 'cause they'll be the ones out patrolling to make sure, you know, try to keep everybody safe as they can. And then lastly, the Green Space Stage, at some point, we're gonna need to come up with a name. Either we just call it Green Space Stage, or do we wanna name it after somebody, but, you know, since we're starting to have events out there, you know, we wanna start, you know, tag it on social media and things of that nature, we wanna make sure we have a set name before, you know, other names pop up, um, and get, you know, used, so we wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. That's something I'd like y'all to think about, if you have any ideas, we'll definitely consider those at our next council meeting. That's all.
That was a thorough report, John, thank you. Uh, okay. I had a question, but it got lost on point nineteen. Thank you.
Letter Q. Agenda Q or double A, whatever, we're up there now.
Thank you, John. Oh, I know what it was, the bathrooms that are being vandalized. Uh, it certainly is inappropriate for me to know who, have the police been able to identify the, uh, the culprits? If they're able to, I suggest we form a bathroom club. I'm very good at it, and I can help. Seriously. Why couldn't you put up cameras? I'm not kidding.
Go break the cameras, go break the cameras.
Probably, and then instead of. Although I consider all of the buttons or phones or whatever you wanna call them, is, I feel like that, um, in certain areas, not only with the lighting, but like, cameras would be efficient.
I thought we had some cameras, like, don't we have one that shoots down Suffolk or something?
We've got that little ping system here.
Don't we have one that shoots by your building?
Uh, but no, I thought they had like the, you know, the interactive doorbell, so if they ring the doorbell here, you can see, somebody can see the video.
In the PD.
Don't we have some cameras?
But, I mean, you could do that, I think you could do that in the bathrooms, if somebody wants in, they put the doorbell, we go downstairs.
We had a chipper camera out there.
Okay.
So, I have a question, and we can't solve the bathroom issue either, I mean, in all schools, it's a huge thing. Uh, but I have a question. Uh, and it has to do with security for the bathrooms at Lake Park, for the bathrooms at the section house, for the bath, which hopefully haven't been vandalized, for the bathrooms at the farmer's market, for the bathrooms at Critterville. How often did the bathrooms at the farmer's market in Critterville, how often do they get vandalized? Frequently?
Oh, yeah, it's all the time. It's all the time.
Did it do anything to help?
I think, I mean, we haven't had anything since.
'Cause you can't use them.
You can't get in it.
Well, no, we shut it down like three weeks in the summer, and everybody kind of, I think, got everybody's attention, like, hey, this is an issue, we need, um, you know.
It is so difficult, I don't have a solution for it, and I was semi-joking about the bathroom club, but I'm not. Uh, I think I will personally try to help, but I have to know what I can legally do, we'll take that up later. Could I say one thing? Sure. Cameras are inexpensive, right here's a live camera on one of my laundromats, and it's tied to the phone. I mean, those are inexpensive, and it's live right now, why can't we do something like that?
Pardon? I thought we had one somewhere that was going on.
I have a question. No, don't. Okay, let's move on. Let's.
Our discussion with John, I'm committed to him, and the host, we talked about that, and I told him, he mentioned the survey. And I didn't have a survey. Um, it was my understanding that, and I, as I stated last time I was here, according to my meets and bounds, when he did the survey, I could dispute what he did, if he didn't come into my meets and bounds, which is what I knew. There is no plat at Tazewell that covers that area. And I'm sure this man did the best job he could, since he did not have anything to go back to attach. And I discussed this with him. Uh, there was only one marker that came close to my meets and bounds. The other three he put out, I told him, I said, they're in the wrong place. And he told me this was his opinion. Well, we all have an opinion, but that was not where they're supposed to be. In nineteen seventy-three, you asked me the last time I knew our survey markers were in place.
Yes.
In nineteen seventy-three, we had to delineate, delineate our boundary for the town. Our markers were in place in the pavement of that one lane. And so we, as I told, uh, John, everything was fine with the town, and so I, I know exactly where they're supposed to be. Now, I do have pictures of what that lane looked like at that time, in the whip, everything that that will help. But I did tell him the survey, but he surveyed all of Park, Critterville, all of the Three Sisters subdivision, and all of the track that is on top of the hill that has the contrast. So when I engaged him to do this, I thought possibly he had found that plaque at Tazewell. Or had some other documentation. So I now know that's not wrong. But my, my survey markers, the one that he did put out that I can use, and right straight up the line, is right above the waterline, which has been delineated because he didn't have it put out. So I wanted to tell you that about the survey that was done, because I did dispute that with him. And ask him about it, and he told me, because you don't go from like seventeen feet up to twenty this way. We were this way. And so when he did this, and I told him, I said, you're out. I don't know why, unless it was the way he surveyed before, I'm sure he did the best job he could without the plaque at Tazewell. But I do want to say that to you now, because I discussed with John, um, options that we had. There's no street parking, everything has been sold off over there, but in seventy-three, we were exactly where the markers were, and they were in the one lane, in that, in that pavement. And with the war, you came through Week One. So I did want to explain that to you, and I did talk at length with him. But, uh, it's my understanding that you won't use the consensus on my property. Uh, that you don't feel like that, that you can do anything about this, tell me again what you can decide.
When I reviewed it, I didn't see anything that clearly was in town's possibility. As I said, you know, that's something council wants legal to look at, you know, it's getting out of some legal, you know, easements and things of that nature, but I.
There is no easement.
Um, but.
Remember, there's not, there's no one there, there's never been an easement. And the town knew this before they paid. And I called the town manager over there, when they were going to pay. And told him, you cannot pay this, this is our property, you cannot come over. Didn't. So you've got the waterline, you've got it paved over it, you've got the traffic, and just before I came over here, getting across that line, there was a car coming right up and doing about thirty-five. So we've got safety issues, but it's my, it's my property. But you're on. You're on with the waterline, you're on the pavement. So somewhere in here.
Go ahead, Rick.
Okay, who surveyed, who paid for the survey to be done?
Uh, for my, I did.
Okay.
See, I tried to get the town to survey, they took out the mark, they never would do that.
How long ago was that?
How long ago was it the survey was done?
My survey, or the, the survey that he had done before?
The survey you just had done?
Um, about a month ago, two months ago, something like that.
It's very hard for us to argue with what your surveyor said, because if, if, if Michael, if we had to go to court, we're gonna, he would have to see, use that survey. If you brought us a survey that, that showed what you were saying that we were wrong, then I feel like we could all, you know, hey, let's see what we can do. But the problem is, you don't have a survey, and I, and I feel for you, 'cause I understand, and I think there's many areas in this county and in this town that people think lines are in one situation or one place, and they're really not, when it, when you break it down. We, we've solved a problem up there, um, in Raven. We had to redo the whole subdivision because everybody's had, had built on someone else's parcel, so that has happened in the past. But in light of you not having a survey that shows that we are on your property, it's very difficult for us to do anything, because we would be fixing someone's private property in that, is that what, is that's what you're saying, John? I, I do, but I'm just saying, you have to understand from our position, I, we all feel for you up here, but we, we have to go by what your survey says, or what we say, and, and unfortunately, your own private survey that you paid for says we're not on you.
I felt like I needed to do that because the town wanted your survey.
Right, 'cause.
They didn't do anything, they didn't come over there to do anything and say, well, we had it all before, like I told you. We came in nineteen ninety-nine, we came in two thousand two, they knew, probably they knew, right here was before they paid it. So they knew where our property line should have been. The town did all of it. They said, I'm telling you, the town did all of it. They did not listen to what we were saying, they did not, you know, so.
Corky? Corky? Uh, I've known you as Corky all my life. This, this began to happen in nineteen seventy-three, is that correct?
Nineteen seventy-three was when we moved there, before we bought the property. Nineteen seventy-three was when we moved there, before we bought the property. We went completely around the property, into all the meets and bounds, and across the front.
Uh-huh.
Everything was there, in place. No written survey, but the markers were in place.
The markers that were there when you bought the property?
When we bought the property.
Mm-hmm.
Where there are any surveys. The one thing that bothered me with this man that did the survey was, he did not want to survey the front. I had to insist that you do the survey on the front of my property.
The most recent survey?
Was my survey I just had done?
Oh.
You don't have your original survey?
Pardon?
You don't have this original survey?
Original survey that, uh.
But you said you had surveyed marker points.
They were there before we bought the house.
But any contractor could have just went and put markers anywhere that he wanted. And I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying, the, the unfortunate situation is, we have to go by what the survey says.
Well, I know you do, but what I'm telling you, mine is in meets and bounds. Meets and bounds are very easy in many ways. Others are not. Your survey don't give you that.
I'm not a professional surveyor.
If you walk in town, and you're east from west, you can pretty much do a meets and bounds. There's increase, but you can do meets and bounds. And so all the markers that were in place at that time, met with what we were reading on, uh, the, our D S A. There were several things that's being said that bothered me. He told me I had been remapped.
Who's he?
The survey.
The most recent one?
He told me I had been remapped.
Do we not have a survey on file? Do we not have a plaque? We should have a plaque.
Uh, Corky, I'm thinking, uh, about it. I think I know where you're talking about. And, uh, over the years, in towns, all towns, not just Richlands, uh, lines get crazy. I mean, I have property that, uh, goes everywhere and foot into somebody else's property and vice versa. I mean, I'm just telling you the truth, and we're just always trying to die before each other. But, uh, my point is, I, I'm trying to understand what the need is. I would like to, um, ask you, if you can, even though it's your survey, is that something that, uh, did you, were you able to see that, John, or was it pertinent to what your decision was? I don't know.
I saw the, the survey markers, but, you know, without knowing, you know, like, there was some of the survey, her line that was in the road, wasn't where she would want access to her property. So, you know, where the lines are, and it's possible that, you know, our road does go in the corner where.
Right.
Survey, but I don't know if there were easements, or is there a road that somebody feed, or I mean, I don't know what.
Or somebody just took it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I have a question. Nineteen seventy-three, who would have been the town manager? Carlisle Mahaffey?
Agreed.
Who?
That's exactly right.
Okay, I'm going back in the annals of time, trying to figure this out. Um. Yeah, Ben Carlisle.
We had to, we had to shove our boundary.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the, another thing is, if I had a place to park when we bought the property, and I no longer have that, you're coming over on it now. So wherever that boundary line of my property line is, you can come over and just see where it's been, it's, it's the traffic.
Yes. So you, you feel deprived of a pro-, a property that's, you feel is duly yours to park on, is that right? But is that, am I framing it correctly?
I can park there.
Okay.
And what I talked to John about was putting up some kind of barrier there, what I talked to you about, to keep the traffic off of me. And let me put my, and let, you put my property back, because you've got pavement on it.
Mm-hmm.
You've got it all tied up.
Mm-hmm.
And even though I've tried to talk to the town before, it killed him that.
You're not, well, I've.
And I have those parked, and I have pictures that will show you where.
Oh, I, I believe you. Corky, here's a.
I don't even know any way to tell you.
Well, in, in, in the interest of courtesy, uh, you certainly have every right to speak. You didn't ask to, I just said it's the right thing to do. So, uh, please know that. It's a matter of great mutual respect. And I think, uh, if you don't mind, maybe I, I can come over with John sometime. Is that all right, John, if we go look at it, just so I can have a visual myself? Is that acceptable? Do you have her number, John? And we'll call you Corky. And if I could bring another member of council, I'll try to rope one of these, uh, uh, distinguished people in and, and bring them with me. Okay? Thank you.
John did come with Bill, and they were very nice, but.
Oh, I have no doubt.
They'll be fine. I will welcome you, just be welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much, Corky.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, um, so let's see here. John, you have finished, is that correct? All right, uh, thank you for your input. Uh, Mike, attorney comments, utility easement, electric system contract review.
Yeah, for the utility easement that's on the, the Shoney's property, um, they're wanting to move the electric, um, the access to electric from the, um, I believe it's over like twenty-five feet. I talked to Nathan on the phone yesterday regarding this. I looked for utility easements. I couldn't find anything on the Shoney's property itself. But he was letting me know that may have to dig up the line that's now currently owned by, or on the property of B and R Enterprises. So we would need an easement from them, as well as an easement for, from the new owners of the Shoney's property, which is, forty-two F L pounding mill LP. They got the property August fifth of twenty twenty-two. I went back all the way to the fifties and was not able to find any easements regarding that property with the town of Richlands. There was some drainage, drainage easements between the two properties, but there wasn't anything with the town of Richland. So I'm, at this point, I'm not able to find anything, um, regarding where the power is or the electric line is at this point. I'll keep going back farther on there, but seems to me like we would have to get an easement from each property to be able to move anything.
So essentially, that's our plan, to go, go through and like get a new easement, uh, if there's no issues with that, which means it's gonna be quicker than continuing to dig and not ever, maybe not ever find what we're looking for.
Thumbs up. Go ahead.
Okay, I think you have a general go-ahead from council. I know we're getting a little nodding up here, but it's okay. Okay, next.
Uh, and as far as the contract review, um, touch base with you all already on this, but it looks to me like the AMP, um, and Blue Ridge would have the ability to, to veto any potential sale of the ownership of electric in Ohio. So, um, I think we've settled that one, what we're being, what we'd be going forward on.
Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I appreciate the review, and I think that's probably the general consensus, is that they could veto it. So that answers our million dollar question of whether or not we could sell the electrical system. Uh, so that brings us to phase two of this, which has always been, if we can't do that, how do we go forward? And I would just suggest, in the lack, you know, uh, to not take up a bunch of time tonight, that you establish, um, an electrical committee that would, uh, a couple of members of council, members of staff, possibly citizens, who, you know, whatever you deem would be best in that situation, uh, to look at alternatives and future power generation, uh, things for the town. And I would be glad to serve on this until I exit council, and even afterward, if you wanted me to, uh, be a citizen, uh, member of that, I'd be glad to serve to help you guys on that. I think it's important, and with what we know, and some of these contracts expiring over the next few years, I think it's very crucial for the, for the future of our town, that we make sure we make the right decisions.
Could I say something on that? That was already approved by council, and it was never followed through. And I'd like to make a suggestion. I would like to be in that committee. And Seth, and name Shay Cook to that committee, because that was part of the old committee that was disbanded. And I think after Seth, uh, would continue after his term as a council is through, and let him carry on with Shay Cook to be the, uh, representatives of the community.
And I think it's, uh, a very, deserves great consideration. Um, and I don't mind at all to appoint you or Seth. Um, I would like to do it at the next meeting, so I can have a great time to think about it. Okay? You and Mary Ann served. Seth was, not Seth, uh, Shay was, was he on it?
No, he wasn't.
On the council, but he resigned from the council.
Right.
But he was on the electoral committee.
But I think Seth knows a lot about the electric. And so does Shay, and I think they would be two great representatives.
Just to clarify, was that committee, you're talking about a rate committee to do recommendations on rate increases versus what Seth, sounds like you're talking about is a little bit different, or were they the same?
Different things.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted time to think about it. The committee that Doug and Mary Ann served on was, uh, primarily dealing with rates. And I think this committee, and I just, I need time to, in my mind, to form what would be the function of such a committee.
No problem.
Would be to, to define the function. Is it just rates, or is it just, I mean, is it, it's greater than that?
Right.
It's greater.
And it was only to bring recommendations to the council, is what we did.
I appreciate that. Doug and I appreciate that. Seth, if you would let me take that under advisement, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I'll, I'll address that. We make a note, um, at the October meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else, Mike? Okay. Council member reports, these are non-voting items. Kristen?
I'm, I'm good.
Kristen, are you good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Uh, and again, thank you and the planning commission for the diligent work you did, uh, on our zoning. It's important. Thank you. Seth?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just two small items. Uh, one, John, I think it would be appropriate if, um, we could get some, a little bit better communication notices wise. I don't have Facebook. I know, I don't know if everybody else does or not, but I miss out on some things. Um, there was a couple of ribbon cuttings I didn't know about, the emergency services dinner Sunday I didn't know about. So what I would suggest on that is to, maybe you can rely on Becca, Heather, someone, uh, and maybe it'd be appropriate for the clerk to do that, since it's notification to the council. Is if you can just let her know, um, a couple of weeks, a month, whatever, in advance, hey, send everybody an email, these are this month's event. This is the, this month's calendar.
And I got you all signed up on the chamber list, sir, so you should be getting those emails. If you're not, because that, that's one of the big, but yeah, um, something we're gonna try to work on to get.
Okay.
Make sure you're all aware of, you know, the events that's been going on.
I mean, it, I know it, it may seem like a small thing, but it's not. And, and we don't want, I know everybody on this council doesn't want people to think we didn't come to your ribbon cutting, cause we don't like you, or whatever. I mean, it's an important part of this, and I think we'll make time to do it if we know about it. Um, and I don't want our emergency services folks to think, well, they didn't, no one cared enough to show up at our dinner, we didn't know about it. You know, and I, I apologize for that, you know, I wanna make sure that we're at these events. If I'm serving on this, I wanna serve in full capacity, and I wanna be there for everything that I can. Please just notify us. Um, the second thing, I got a phone call this week, uh, from a lady who has a trailer park on Farmer Street, and it's on Farmer and Royal, can't think of her name off the top of my head, but I did drive by and look at this, and she's lost two sales because the people came and met with Nathan, and I think Nathan scared them. Uh, basically was saying, this is, you'll have to do this, 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 and this. Really, they don't have to do anything. You know, it's grandfathered in under what it is now. So I think, I don't know what the answer is, but I need to understand, like, I, I can't understand it all, I'm just hearing her side of it.
If you'll, if you'll send me that information, I'll look into it and get you.
Okay, great. I just wanna understand it. What are you telling them? What are you, why, why are you scared of them?
Misunderstanding, yeah, well, I'll look at it.
Yeah, yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna cost someone a sale, you know, of their property with fear. We're here to help. We're here to help. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Seth. Doug?
I've just got one thing. I'd like to make a motion. And this motion.
Doug, these are, uh, non-voting items on the agenda.
Okay, you want me to wait till after everyone spoke to make a motion?
I would appreciate it.
Okay. Um, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Rick?
Michelle Kellen's who I was saying, I called you.
Yes, yes.
Uh, it's the Kellen Trailer Park over at, uh, she said she was told she had to replace all the water lines and pave the street and all this down the trail. I don't understand.
I'd have to look, if it, it wasn't one for a while, she's gotta bring it up, but I, you know, I'll have to look at it and see what, what's going on.
Uh, Dale Streves and his wife is here. His street, his wall was pretty bad, so Jeff knows, I don't know the name of the street.
Well, Lee Street Extension.
Yeah, Lee Street Extension. Will you look at that wall and whether it's another next hand for me, you know?
That's been a problem for ten years.
I know, but it's getting to be.
Yeah, I know.
It's gonna take his house out when it falls.
Oh, I know that. That's why I need, that's why.
Dale Streves.
That's why I'm saying it needs to.
They was here earlier, but they couldn't stay.
That's why I'm adding it needs to be addressed, you know?
Are you addressing?
Lee Street Extension. It's the wall between the.
The address for that trailer park, it's like thirteen twenty-three Farmer Street. But it's Farmer, the corner of Farmer Street and Royal. And he said, he's right, it's the Kellen Trailer Park.
It's the Kellen Trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah, years ago.
I think that Lee Street may be one I've looked at, but I'll.
Lee Street Extension, I think you have.
Years ago, you were on, uh, council, and we got Tim to do an engineer over there and try to do something, but we never heard anything else. But we tried to address that years ago.
If it's the one I'm thinking about, it's kind of blows out, you know, is, did they build it, and it's their responsibility to maintain, or is it, you know, the town is kind of in that gray area of you not knowing?
It's a town wall, because both sides of it is town, was at one time town street. Now, this thing got dismantled somehow or another, but only thing I'm saying, if it falls, we got a water line right behind it, we've got problems there, that's really gonna happen.
And human life.
And human life is at point, and it's kind of pretty important, so.
Yeah, I'll check on it.
I mean, I, I know you can't stop it from falling, and you're not an engineer, but we've gotta do something to see what we can do to start the process, what we need to do to take care of the property. We got houses right above it, too, you know? I know. And, uh, I think, Mayor, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, Laura?
Um, yesterday I contacted you, Mr. Daniel, about a flag at Critterville. Do you have an update? Was that taken care of?
I haven't, but we have flags here as soon as, you know, I guess I might take care of it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we have extra flags here.
Okay, perfect. Um, also, I had a citizen concern about the brush pickup truck, that I know sometimes it takes a day, sometimes it takes a couple of weeks, but someone said it had been a little bit over two months.
Waiting on a part for the grapple trucks, so they're, you're trying to go around and do the best they can with, you know, other equipment in between your garbage runs. So if they have a, uh, something they put out, have them call, and we'll make sure we get them on our list. Um, and that's, we're trying to go through and knock them out, you know, as we can, can, until that piece of equipment's repaired.
Okay, perfect. Uh, next thing I know is not going to be a popular thing, but, uh, it ties in to what we were talking about earlier. I would appreciate if you could, for the next meeting, bring us information on how we would start the process of a forensic audit. It's not to point fingers at anyone sitting here, it's to find out how we go forward a lot better and more efficiently. Um, also, I've had a lot of business owners, small business owners, reach out to me about, um, only certain businesses in town kind of seem to get all the attention. I would like council to consider, um, forming a small business alliance. We used to have one at one point, and it kind of, when the, uh, the administration changed, all of their little committees kind of went away, and there are some business owners who are interested in, uh, small business alliance here in town. Um, also had a question about, from the ARPA update, I was still waiting on the answer for what the budget needs were.
So essentially, because we're gonna use it for, you know, salaries and things. So essentially, because we were gonna use it for salaries and things, we used it to not go upon taxes. So we had some debt and things that, where we could do one-time payments to address those, uh, to keep our budget at a point where we wouldn't have to do any additional tax increases. So essentially, it was used to make some payments so that we wouldn't have that added cost in that, this current year's budget.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And the last thing, um, I'm sure everybody has seen in the news that, uh, the value of used cars and such are skyrocketing right now. We have implemented a personal property tax, which I would love to see out the window at this point because people in Richlands are being taxed twice here and in the county. The county just offered some relief to their citizens with that personal property tax because the value of used cars are going up. Um, if we could look into that, maybe at the next meeting, talk about how we can offer our citizens relief.
So I, essentially, there's already some relief in there. When we passed our budget, we thought the county was gonna stick to their total evaluations. They ended up going back, it's my understanding, reducing it by about ten percent. So there's already a discount kind of essentially built in based on what we originally did our budget on. Uh, but beyond that, I don't, I can look into what options they have, if that's something that council wants to consider.
I would appreciate that, I'm not sure what the consensus is there, but, um, people, even though our rate might stay the same, when the value of those used cars are gonna go up, people are gonna automatically have to pay more. And, um, I think right now we need to do everything we can to.
And I'll talk to staff about, you know, I don't want to put something in place, and then the accounting side is a nightmare. You say, well, I'll talk to them about, you know, what options we have that we can easily make the transactions.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That, Laura?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, uh, just a couple of things, uh, recommission wise, and getting back to, I guess, our discussion on the destruction of the bathrooms, because we talked about that a little bit in the commission meeting. And, uh, you know, hopefully we'll have somebody here from the commission next month. We couldn't get together for a workshop this time, but, uh, we were talking about the possibility of maybe a maintenance person or adding a maintenance person to be able to, you know, we had one of those pre-COVID that checked bathrooms, sort of maintained trash, trash receptacles at different parks throughout town, and he would do a month, he would do a daily drive-by of all the, of all the bathrooms and the facilities and make sure they were stocked and stuff. So maybe that's something that, you know, I'm glad we brought that up tonight about the Lake Park bathroom, so maybe that's something we can get some more feedback on. But, uh, I think they're, hopefully it's supposed to be here next month to help us report on it.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else?
That's it, thanks.
I appreciate that, because, um, when people tear up the bathrooms, they're just hurting themselves. Okay, uh, Doug, you wanted to make a motion, this is the time to do it.
I want to make a motion, uh, I know it, I've studied the electric system, I know how much it brings in. It makes quite a bit of profit. I'd like to make the motion, our citizens are in trouble with electric rates. And we've ran a lot of businesses out of town as well as citizens. So I'd like to make the motion that our system mirrors AEP in structure and cost. And I know we can afford it, and the, the electric system will be fine. And one good thing about AEP, they are regulated by the SEC. And if we mirror them, then we can get the benefits of making sure that we don't have increases we shouldn't. And that would help the citizens tremendously right now on this hard. As Laura said a few minutes ago, our town's in trouble. We're losing population every day, and we're losing businesses. And what I said about pop-up Richlands, if we don't reduce the rates on the electric and get them in line with AEP, then those businesses aren't gonna last very long, and the businesses that have been here twenty years, they're not staying, they're leaving. And I heard one realtor, uh, say, hey, I can sell anything but not Richlands because of the electric rates. That's the reputation we have now. The realtors go around saying, hey, I can sell a house anyplace, but I cannot get anyone to move to Richlands. And it's because of the high electric rates. And my motion is that we start mirroring AEP's rates and their structure, and that would include the demand meters.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, but there's a motion by Doug and a second by Seth. Now, to mirror AEP's rates and structure, is that right?
I, I don't have any problem with that, you know, I completely agree. I think whatever we do in the town should at least match. We can't have a better rate than AEP. We should at least match AEP, or there's really no point of us being in the power business other than now we find out we're, we're stuck in the power business. But I just don't know what that, I don't know, I don't, I don't know that that's as simple as us making a motion here. I, I don't, I don't know how that works. Mayor, I, I mean, is it as simple, can we make a motion tonight to?
My, my concern would be, you know, they, the way we do our rate, like, I would need to look at, figure out a way that we could, because, you know, we, they have like ten charges, and we might have eight, trying to find a way.
But I don't know how you do that, I don't think it's as simple as just, and, you know, and if one's higher than what we have, then we have to, we have to, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not doing something against the charter, which requires advertising.
I will share, you asked for my thoughts.
Yes, sir.
Um, I totally understand the point of it. Um, I think it's very complex, and a motion, uh, I don't think it can be solved in a motion, my personal view. And I could carry on about it, and I have an example, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to share that example right now.
And I, I can bring back more information next month, that's the direction council wants to look at.
I, I think that would be the best thing, Doug.
Well, I mean.
I think we need to have a workshop, a budget and power workshop.
If, if we can't manage a system and we get wholesale prices, and if we can't manage a system that we can be as cheap, we should, we could be even cheaper eventually, not right now, till we explore this being the same as AEP. But we're failing all the citizens if we can't be exactly what AEP is.
Or better?
And it's illegal or better. And I think it's illegal what we're doing.
Yeah, what happens for them?
We're charging one town a certain price from AEP, and the other town pays a higher price in our system, and that's illegal. And there's no reason, I've studied that system, it makes over a million dollars a year, and that system can mirror AEP.
Thank you, Doug, thank you, Seth. Uh, so unless anybody has something they want to say, do you want to say something? Laura?
I agree with you, I think that, uh, it's definitely something we stopped kicking the can down the road on. My only concern about voting on it tonight is that we have to have a public hearing. Um, I would like to see at the next meeting what that would look like rate-wise. Um, my, one of my biggest concerns about the difference, obviously, what Mr. Ralph said about the old town, new town debate. Um, I am in Hidden Valley, I'm, thank God, on AEP right now. But there was a time when Richlands was a lot less, so then this is, this could potentially flip where Hidden Valley's getting upset because we're not as low as, you know, the town. But my biggest concern about AEP is the demand meters. They don't have a lot of the businesses that we have on demand meters. They don't put salons and garages on demand meters, and that is impacting small businesses, I think. Probably worse than the rates, so, um, and I know you said you'd like to put everybody in town on a demand meter, but I'd like to take the demand meters away, and I think mirroring AEP is gonna, gonna reduce that. So I would like to see what that's gonna look like. Other than that, if we didn't have to have a public hearing and it were a perfect world, I would say, you know, let's hit it up right now.
And Doug, I, I'd just ask you to make, to withdraw your motion and wait until next month. I, and I seconded it because I wanted a, a discussion, but I, I agree with Laura, I don't think we can, I don't think you can do this with a mo, I don't think you can vote. I think if we all voted yes tonight, I don't think it would, it would just be semantics because there's a lot of solving that has to go.
The council sets the rates, we can do it. We set our own rates.
But with a public hearing.
And we're not regulated. And another thing, we let, no disrespect, the town is getting rich off of taking money out of the electric system and putting it in the budget for other things. And that's like taking and putting the foxes in charge of regulating and say, uh, we can't do that. They're not gonna ever say that we can do it, the finance office is, no disrespect, John, because you guys are taking close to, uh, I know.
Well, I don't hear him saying that, I just hear him say, I think what he said was, is that it's, it's maybe a little more complicated than us just making a vote. Give him, give him time.
Saying we're not gonna do it.
No.
I have a suggestion, gentlemen.
He doesn't get to say we're not gonna do it.
Right, we say that.
But if he gives you the data, it's flawed.
I have a suggestion. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Doug, do you want your motion to stand?
Yes, I do.
I withdraw my second.
And he withdraws the second. Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second to this motion?
Can you withdraw a second?
I just did.
Uh, the motion dies for lack of a second. We'll take this up at another time, Doug, don't despair.
And Mayor Curry, I just want to make perfectly clear, my stance on that is strictly because of that public hearing. Um, I, if we could do it tonight without a public hearing, I would say yes to that.
I agree with that, too.
But it is, we have got to have a public hearing legally, we.
Well, why don't we set, why don't we set a public hearing tonight? What's wrong with that? If you want a public hearing, let's have one, and let's bring all the citizens in, let them decide if they want to pay the same thing as AEP or not.
If you'll make a motion for a public hearing, I'll second it, and I'll vote with it.
I'll make that motion.
But we've got to have that properly advertised, because, I, I mean, everybody knows how I am about FOIA and the advertisements. Um, I'm all for a public hearing, and.
I make that motion that we have a pub, public hearing on maybe setting our rates the same as AEP.
At the next, at the October meeting?
No, I'm saying within two weeks.
Wouldn't you have to, a public hearing wouldn't have to be specific about what you're, you're meeting about? Like, we would have to have a specific rate structure, you'd have, you can't just.
Yeah, and I, I don't know how easy it's gonna be to get that from AEP.
For, for rates, you have to advertise the rate.
Doug. Right, we can't just advertise arbitrarily.
To the next council, right.
So would, would you guys be comfortable with having a public hearing?
Yeah.
And if citizens, if enough citizens come into this room and they say, this is what we want, then we're gonna look at you and say, hey, bring us that back.
Yeah, you can have a public hearing to discuss.
We would try to have the right, whatever AEP's rates are, we try to have that advertised, so then, you know, they know what they're agreeing to, or just, you know, like, what they're.
Maybe we could have a public hearing just to, to gauge the interest. And if we've got a hundred people who come in here and say, gosh, don't do that, then we're gonna say, let it die. Or if you got people who come in and say, hey, let's do it, then we're gonna say, okay, go ahead, because it is gonna be complicated.
If that's, if that's all y'all want at the next meeting versus having numbers and data, and, uh, yeah, it's a lot more. And we can start working with AEP to see what they're willing to give us.
Laura, I'm gonna guess this, most people who come here, they already think that AEP is, maybe it is. So the majority of people who come will want that, so.
It one hundred percent is, I, there's no, there's no ambiguity. AEP is cheaper.
It's much cheaper.
I can tell you that right now.
Right now?
I can, uh, there's no ambiguity to it, one hundred percent, AEP is cheaper.
Well, all I'm saying, Seth, is if we're depending on the, uh, citizens to come, we certainly need to honor their wishes. Uh, but maybe.
I just think.
Maybe they need to be heard.
It's, yeah, I'm, I have no problem with that, I think it's just cart before the horse. We need to know if, I'm a hundred percent behind setting that rate structure, but we have to know what that is before we can say, we're gonna set the rate structure at this, we have to know what this is.
Right, it's, it's, I don't think it's quite as simple as it sounds, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, and my stance on it is.
I'll talk to Mayor there, AEP, and see what they can give us, so we can start.
Okay. I think that'd be great.
So, are we pretty good with what we're doing? You had a motion, did somebody second your motion?
No.
He had a motion to have a public hearing in two weeks, I don't think we can do it in two weeks.
I'll second his motion.
In two weeks?
You can't do it in two weeks, can you?
I'll wait, he can get the information.
Can we just do it at October?
I, I don't mind that, would you mind to do it at the October meeting?
Just as long as we have it, at least have citizens.
Are we just deeming this as a, this is a rate discussion, or a, what, what is it called?
Yeah, how, how would you word that?
I do not know.
I would word it that we want to have the same rates as AEP, do you want that as a public? Just simple.
It's a rate discussion.
Can you do that, Mike?
I mean, you're gonna have a public hearing, um, my feelings with that is AEP can change their rates at any time. It's gonna be a whole lot harder for the town of Richlands to ever change their rates, because they gotta advertise, and they gotta go through all the states.
And, and let me say, let me add this one thing to this, Doug, before we do this. I do know also from our, from John and I's discussion, AEP is going to be raising their rates within the next, what'd she say, sixty days?
I know there were a couple of rate increases they had in place, but I don't know where they.
That's.
So like they do it in the middle of the year.
That's what I've heard. I've been on, I've been on this council for twenty years, I hear that every time.
Doug?
AEP is gonna raise their rates, we gotta watch. I mean, that always happens.
Again, I have no problem with it, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm listening to what Mike's saying. If we do this, just hypothetically, we're still in discussion, there's a motion or a second, hypothetically. We, if we lower rates today, AEP raises their rates.
Then we.
In two weeks, we have to schedule another public hearing.
No, AEP doesn't do it that way. AEP, it takes months for them to raise their rates, they have to get cleared with SCC, we would have plenty of time.
But they've already had rate approval, they're, they already have rate increase approvals from the state. That's, that's what she's telling us.
But they have to go through the hoops and so forth, it takes months and months, you know?
AEP doesn't have to hear from you of whether they can raise their rates or not. The town, the citizens of Richlands have the.
So they were saying, it's gonna be, because they're our new rates, and they mirror AEP at this point, but we're not gonna mirror, mirror AEP. Then anytime they change it, we've gotta jump, and if we're not, then we've set a precedent of this is what we are. And it's harder to follow, because they're saying, these are our rates, they mirror AEP at this point in time.
It's not.
Then as things change, we are locked into immediately having to change.
It's not hard, they, it takes them three to four months to go through all the hoops to get regulated. We would have plenty of time to do that. I'm telling you that the town's dying, all the businesses are leaving, and it's mostly because of the electric rates. That's not the bad part, you've got people on set incomes that have eighteen hundred dollars, and their electric bill's twelve hundred. I mean, they cannot survive.
I think we all agree, we all agree that we would like the rates to be the same.
But everybody, I'm not you, I'm not saying that, they're always gonna make excuses why you can't do that.
But here, here's what you're saying, I, what you need to, so there's an all-in rate. And the way that we calculate it is different than the way that, that AEP calculates it. But at the end of that, I should be able to pick up a bill from AEP and take how many kilowatt hours that I have, divide that by the total bill, that's my all-in cost, and then have a bill from Richlands, and they should be very similar.
Right.
That's, that should be the goal.
That's like the difference.
Right, you can't, I, because I can't say, well, they're charging eight cents a kilowatt, and we're charging twelve. That's not ever gonna work out, you have to say, what's the all-in cost? And the only way we can do that is to do a comparative study.
Right.
And you have to take ten, a hundred households that are in AEP, and a hundred households that are here, and you get a blended rate, that's the only way that you can do it.
Can I give you a perfect example?
Let me ask you this, guys.
I just want, you may give one example of what Seth's saying, and then I'll, okay. I have more businesses out of town, so I can do comparative studies, okay? And to me, I can afford to pay the high electric rates, and I do. But most people, a lot of people cannot, but I'll give you a prime example. I have a laundromat here in town. I have a laundromat in Abingdon, and they're, stay twenty-four hours. The one in Abingdon is much busier than this one, okay? The power rate in Abingdon, which I can bring it next council meeting if you want to see, it's not even six hundred dollars. I pay a thousand sixty-seven to Richlands for this one, so that's four hundred.
How many kilowatts did you use, that, what you need to do, to do the real comparison?
I did.
How many kilowatts did you use in Abingdon? How many did you use here? Divide it by your bill, and then you get an all-in rate, this is.
It's much higher, I can show you, it's much higher here than for me to operate in Abingdon. And like I said, I don't, I can afford to pay it because my customers, I have to raise my, uh, prices. I can do that, but these people on set income that have eighteen hundred dollars.
I think we're all in a hundred percent agreement, I just don't know, we, John has to look at that to figure it out.
Uh, we, it's fine, if you want to have a public hearing, I personally don't think with this discussion, we're ready for a public hearing. I don't see how we're ready to have a hearing, what are we gonna tell the people? Da-da-da-da-da. That's my personal feeling.
Well, you tell them, Richlands is. Well, you tell them, Richlands is going to be the same thing as AEP, that's what you tell them, it's simple.
Okay.
From, from me, for, from a legal standpoint, because you know how I am about FOIA and those advertisements, to have the, you've got to put it in the paper, the actual rates. You can't just say, hey, we're going to mirror AEP, and FOIA is going to be okay with that.
I think we have a discussion in October, and then you can have your facts to do a, a thing.
I mean, I'm really, gentlemen, and ladies, I am listening, and I'm going. People out here are going to go like this, we want it cheaper, cheaper, cheaper. Well, is that what's best for them and us? It sounds it, but we don't have an idea of what we're doing right now, I don't think.
Yeah.
So is there a motion?
I would change that want to a need, okay?
Well, is there a, uh, was there a motion on the floor?
I think Doug made a motion to have a public hearing.
He did, and I, I did a second on the motion.
Okay, to have a public hearing.
Would the folks be interested in having the same rates as AEP? That would be simple to me.
All right, is your motion standing?
It's going to be before the next meeting, right? I mean, we're just popping in here half an hour earlier and.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the floor in a second. Um, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Yes.
Laura? Yes.
Motion carries with a public hearing next meeting, and John, I'll let you decide how to advertise that, because I really don't know what to do.
I'll ever have, based on what, the motion that was made.
Yeah, just take the motion and put it in there, okay? Now, uh, are we all, I guess we found that him or Seth.
I think it was same race as AEP, right, John?
No, that's not what you were saying.
What did I say?
Mayor's comment.
That was my motion.
Have him restate his motion to John.
Restate my motion, my motion was to have the same rates as AEP in the town of Richlands.
To have a public hearing to discuss having the same rates.
Okay, I want my exact words, okay?
We said, motion on having a public hearing on October the eleventh, we said two weeks first, and we changed it to October eleventh to set our rates the same as AEP.
Yeah.
So it's still a discussion, then, we have to do it all, yeah.
Cause we obviously can't vote about that.
No.
And we have no rate.
Okay, before everybody leaves, uh, we're going on to Mayor's comments. Uh, they'll be brief, first off, I'm looking back here, Mr. Hankins, thank you very much for being here tonight. Uh, you look like a solid force and a crew back there with Keith and, and Matt and others. Uh, I appreciate everybody here to stay to the last, it means you're really digging in, and I appreciate that, and on behalf of the council, they do too. Actually, this has turned out to be more fun than you would imagine, I see smiles on John's face, and that tells me every bit of life has some worth, something worth it. And you can take this with you wherever you go in life, John, and always have it with you, you might be here to the end of time, we don't know, uh, just think about that. And then the other part of my, uh, Mayor's comments, uh, we have things happening, uh, I'll share with you just a little bit, nothing is concrete. Uh, at the section house, we're going to try to have a little something over there for Halloween, we don't know. When Seth said somebody was spooking them to death, I thought maybe we need them at the section house, we don't know what we're going to do. Would you like to come and spook some people over there, Seth?
I'm good.
Get your beard on, everything, and put beads in it, you know? And, uh, we accept all help, uh, and, uh, so we really want something for the children. On a more serious note, and that is serious, um, I am in contact, this is, you know, I really believe in something for everybody. And we have all these people here who ride these trails, and we have people who do water and sewer and whatever. Well, I'm this guy that's kind of academic, or I want to be, and so I've been in contact with Dr. John Rogosta, who is a superb scholar at the University of Virginia. He has just written a book about Patrick Henry, he is, he's a real, an international scholar on Thomas Jefferson. And I will tell you that Cooperhurst will want to meet this man. Uh, so I am trying really hard to get him to come here to preview his book on Patrick Henry. And I piqued his interest on the very fact that Patrick Henry gave us our name. And as soon as the university, uh, uh, signs the contract, uh, he will be in contact, I want him to come and talk to us. For anybody interested, it's not anything but just a program, something for everybody. And so I think it will be very interesting and enlightening, and it will get our minds off other things, so that we know we're not as important sometimes as we think. Uh, okay, that being said, it, it's important to know where we stand in this world, and he's going to enlighten us in other things. And I think you'll find him amazing. That being said, I'm hoping, I told him I'm no longer a teacher in Tazewell County Public Schools, which he was very disappointed. But I hope to goodness I haven't lost my contacts at RHS with Mr. Vensel and Mrs. Hurst, that they would welcome a true scholar, a world scholar. And I think that would be really cool, and Jackson would love it. So there you have it. I, I just think we all work toward different things, and that's what makes this town whole, not just a little piece of a pie. We get cherry pie, blueberry pie, and, you know, whatever, rhubarb pie, the whole nine yards, it makes it interesting. And I am so glad we're here, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
And that is passed.
Thank you.
It is unanimous.
I believe in this, Seth.
Yeah, I think it would be great.
Oh, it's Seth, he really wants to come.